order for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Wednesday, March 23rd. And although we are two members shy of a quorum at this point, we do have some presentations. So I'm going to begin today and ask everyone to join me in recognizing Councilmember Eric Garcetti. Oh, I'm sorry.
So let me tell a joke. Let me tell a joke. That's how I do that. Imitate Eric Garcetti.
I will recognize Councilmember Martin Ludlow.
Any day you make that mistake, I take it as a compliment. Colleagues, good morning. It's an honor to be here this morning to make a very special presentation and both a personal honor for me and I think a distinguished honor for the city of Los Angeles. Nearly 50 years ago, this past May 17th, to be exact, the Supreme Court declared that racial segregation in public schools deprived students of equal educational opportunities in the landmark case Brown versus the Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas. This ruling overturned the 1896 Plessy versus Ferguson case, which approved separate but equal classrooms for black children. The Brown case was pivotal in laying the foundation for the American Civil Rights Movement of 1964 and the advancement of people of color. I am here today with Anthony Asadala Samad, a distinguished author, in his release of his latest book, Fifty Years After Brown: The State of Black Equality in America. In this book, he examines the meaning of equality in America and whether or not equality has ever been achieved for African-Americans since this historic Supreme Court decision. This is his second release. His first book, Souls for Sale, The Diary of an Ex-Colored Man, examines the 1980s civil rights progress agenda by accounting the experiences of a young African-American Angelino. Some of us are actually mentioned in that book. Not only is he an accomplished author, Mr. Samad is also an associate professor of political science and African-American studies at East Los Angeles College and is president of Samad and Associates, an urban strategic planning firm specializing in the assessment and management of public policy, economics, social, and race issues. Additionally, many of us know him as a columnist and has published an award-winning weekly editorial commentary that contributes to over 100 newspapers and cyber websites worldwide, one of which I'm sure each and every one of us are familiar with. He's a regular columnist in the Los Angeles Sentinel. Joining us today along with Brother Samad is his wife Deborah, a longtime public health advocate in the city and county of Los Angeles, and Brent Burton, president of the Los Angeles County Stentorians to help accept this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. I want to mention tomorrow night, we're going to be joined by a very large turnout at the Holden Performing Arts Center for an official book signing of this new book. Colleagues, we've put a complimentary cover sheet from this book on each one of your desks, and I just can't tell you how honored I am to stand here with an individual that is now releasing his second book. For any of you that have ever contemplated writing a chapter of a book, can appreciate what it means to actually have now published two successful books, and we brought him here today to honor him on the day of the release of his second book, Fifty Years After Brown. Please join me in a warm welcome for Anthony Asadala Samad.
First of all, giving praise to God. I would like to thank Councilman Ludlow. I see many friends around the old shoehorn. It doesn't look like much of a shoehorn anymore, but that's progress. I will say that this opportunity to share this book with many of my Angelinos is important because this is where I grew up. This is an important statement in terms of our ability to analyze what equality means and how we provide equality for all Los Angelinos in terms of the next 50 years, not only just the state of education, but the state of economic reciprocity, the state of homeownership, the state of buy-in into our American system and our American values. So again, I would like to thank Councilman Ludlow for the opportunity for him hosting the book launch party tomorrow night at the Nate Holden Performing Arts Theater from 6:30 to 8:30. I'd like to thank my wife Deborah and Brent and many of the friends who came out today. This is significant in terms of being able to just say to the city council in the city of Los Angeles, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And as I conclude, just wanted to say, Anthony, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, all members of the council sign this resolution, as well as the mayor, the city attorney, who's actually in the audience here this morning, and our city controller, recognizing you for the release of your new book. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. For our second presentation, I will now recognize Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Ludlow, as well, for a great presentation. We're joined today by the city attorney, Rocky Delgado, and I know that we are all facing a very bittersweet day as we say goodbye to a friend, a colleague, and a real point of light here in Los Angeles, Alana Bowman, of the city attorney's office. Alana has served the city for 20 years, over 20 years. She's been the supervisor of the city attorney's domestic violence prevention unit, where she is largely responsible working with that team and building up an 85% conviction rate, which is very difficult, I think, as many of us recognize in cases of domestic violence, 85% conviction rate against perpetrators of domestic violence. Alana is now the special assistant to the city attorney for domestic violence policy, and in this role has affected some of the things we've done around here. We had a very nice chat this morning about SEDA, the Convention to Eliminate All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, a UN convention that we have enacted here in Los Angeles, but which we still have much work to do to make a living, breathing reality as we look at how the impact of our policies affect women and girls throughout Los Angeles and within our own city family as well. And for her help with that, I owe her a personal debt of gratitude. Beyond the boundaries of this city, though, Alana has been a national and an international spokesperson for issues dealing with gender, dealing with family and domestic violence. She has been somebody who has traveled on behalf of the city, representing us abroad in Asia, here in the United States. Recently, she just returned from the United Nations as well, looking at some of the policies that the United Nations enacts around SEDA as well. But she's also helped make sure that we have a more just city, working diligently inside the domestic violence unit of the city attorney's office to sponsor, I think I was reading, it's over 40 bills over the years that the domestic violence unit has put together, changing lives, not only of women here in Los Angeles, but when those changes are enacted throughout the state, that affects, you know, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of more people throughout California, and it also has established a level and a model nationally and internationally. I know it was my father's great joy to be able to work with her. I first, I don't know if Alana remembers it or if we've talked about it a long time, I first had a conversation with her in 1994 when I was working for Kathleen Brown's campaign for governor, and we were looking for statewide policy to enact, part of a platform for Kathleen Brown, and everybody said, you've got to talk to Alana, you've got to talk to Alana. And looking at some of the ideas that were put in place there, she's been able, I know, to enact those over the years. I wanted to just, before letting your boss, Rocky Delgado, say a couple words, say how much you will be missed here in Los Angeles. Alana is moving to New Zealand, where she will be working on similar issues with domestic battery and domestic violence with some of the CBOs and other folks, but she's moving, it's not just a one or two-year thing, she's moving to New Zealand. So that's good news and bad news. It's bad news because she's going to be so far away, it's good news because she's only an email away, and we finally have that friend we've wanted to visit in New Zealand for some time. But Maya Angelou Alana wrote a poem called "Touched by an Angel," and I wanted to dedicate a portion of this poem to you as somebody who's been an angel, whose labor of love here has touched the lives of so many abuse survivors in the city. And just before I read these closing words, colleagues, we honor all kinds of people here in front of the city council, heroes and heroines, people who've been able to win sporting awards, people who've been able to lead countries. We've had the UN Secretary General Kofi Annan here, but I can't think of somebody in this city who has more directly impacted some of the most hopeless residents that we represent here in Los Angeles as Alana. So with that, I'd like to dedicate this from Maya Angelou. "We, unaccustomed to courage, exiles from delight, live coiled in shells of loneliness until love leaves its high holy temple and comes into our sight to liberate us into life. If we are bold, love strikes away the chains of fear from our souls." And Alana, you have done that not only for us, but for so many people. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rocky Delgado to say a few words as well.
Thank you very much, Eric. I think it's appropriate that Eric use poetry to describe Alana's career because I do believe her actions as an advocate, as a lawyer, as someone who stands up for those who do not have a voice has been very poetic. Every stage in her career in the city attorney's office for over 20 years, and by the way, she started when she was 10, have been, have provided that kind of poetry for people who are in the most need. She started as deputy city attorney, serving first as running the domestic violence unit and has now served as the special assistant to the city attorney for domestic violence issues. She has worked across the city, across the state. Eric pointed out she helped sponsor 40 bills, which resulted in 94 laws, 94 new laws because of this individual in the state of California. The most recent of which, by the way, we now are allowed to take guns out of the homes of victims of domestic violence so that nothing escalates to a level that might be more dangerous and difficult for all of us to deal with. She is quite a leader for the state of California and for Los Angeles, as Eric pointed out. She is going to New Zealand, so, and she has told me we're all welcome to come visit. She says she has a compound there, so we're going to be in a good place. But Alana has certainly provided a vibrant voice for those who are on the downside of advantage and those who cannot speak for themselves, and so I'm pleased and honored to have been a small part of her career here in the city of angels, and it is with that a great pleasure that I now present to her this certificate along with Eric on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and her dedication to the rights of those who are in most need of her help.
Okay, Rocky, before we hear you and the presentation, let me call on Councilmember Tom Labond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Delgado, get your picture right there. A lot of congratulations. I think one of the many remarkable things said is about the number of items resulted in legislation. In all different roles we have in the city, whether you're in public works or in public safety or in city attorney's office, after you serve, if you'd look back and see how many trees that you planted, you planted a lot of trees in legislation that makes a difference in the lives of many people. But I'm also pleased you're going to New Zealand because we have a sister city in New Zealand, in Auckland, and we need energy from people in New Zealand to help that bond a little, and I hope you can find your way. Helen Clark is the prime minister and Kath Thizard is the former governor general, and so there's a lot of old LA fire trucks down there too in their museums, so you could fit right at home if you're in North Island in Auckland.
Welcome for Anthony Asadala Samad.
First of all, giving praise to God, I would like to thank Councilman Ludlow. I see many friends around the old shoehorn. It doesn't look like much of a shoehorn anymore, but that's progress. I will say that this opportunity to share this book with many of my Angelinos is important because this is where I grew up. This is an important statement in terms of our ability to analyze what equality means and how we provide equality for all Los Angelinos in terms of the next 50 years, not only just the state of education, but the state of economic reciprocity, the state of homeownership, the state of my in into our American system and our American values. So again, I would like to thank Councilman Ludlow for the opportunity for him hosting the book launch party tomorrow night at the Nate Holden Performing Arts Theater from 6:30 to 8:30. I'd like to thank my wife, Deborah, and Brett, and many of the friends who came out today. This is significant in terms of being able to just say to the City Council in the City of Los Angeles, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And as I conclude, just wanted to say, Anthony, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, all members of the council, sign this resolution, as well as the mayor, the city attorney, who's actually in the audience here this morning, and our city controller, recognizing you for the release of your new book. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's go into the back.
For our second presentation, I will now recognize Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Ludlow, as well, for a great We're joined today by the city attorney, Rocky Delgado, and I know that we are all facing a very bittersweet day as we say goodbye to a friend, a colleague, and a real point of light here in Los Angeles, Alana Bowman, of the city attorney's office. Alana has served the city for 20 years, over 20 years. She's been the supervisor of the city attorney's domestic violence prevention unit, where she is largely responsible working with that team and building up an 85% conviction rate, which is very difficult, I think, as many of us recognize, in cases of domestic violence, 85% conviction rate against perpetrators of domestic violence. Alana is now the special assistant to the city attorney for domestic violence policy, and in this role has affected some of the things we've done around here. We had a very nice chat this morning about SEDAW, the Convention to Eliminate All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, a UN convention that we have enacted here in Los Angeles, but which we still have much work to do to make a living, breathing reality as we look at how the impact of our policies affect women and girls throughout Los Angeles and within our own city family as well. And for her help with that, I owe her a personal debt of gratitude. Beyond the boundaries of this city, though, Alana has been a national and an international spokesperson for issues dealing with gender, dealing with family and domestic violence. She has been somebody who has traveled on behalf of the city, representing us abroad in Asia, in here in the United States. Recently, she just returned from the United Nations as well, looking at some of the policies that the United Nations enacts around SEDAW as well. But she's also helped make sure that we have a more just city, working diligently inside the domestic violence unit of the city attorney's office to sponsor, I think I was reading, it's over 40 bills over the years that the domestic violence unit has put together, changing lives not only of women here in Los Angeles, but when those changes are enacted throughout the state, that affects, you know, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of more people throughout California. And it also has established a level and a model nationally and internationally. I know it was my father's great joy to be able to work with her. I first, I don't know if Alana remembers it or if we've talked about it a long time, I first had a conversation with her in 1994 when I was working for Kathleen Brown's campaign for governor. And we were looking for statewide policy to enact, part of a platform for Kathleen Brown, and everybody said, you've got to talk to Alana, you've got to talk to Alana. And looking at some of the ideas that were put in place there, she's been able, I know, to enact those over the years. I wanted to just, before letting your boss, Rocky Delgado, say a couple of words, say how much you will be missed here in Los Angeles. Alana is moving to New Zealand, where she will be working on similar issues with domestic battery and domestic violence with some of the CBOs and other folks, but she's moving, it's not just a one- or two-year thing, she's moving to New Zealand. So that's good news and bad news. It's bad news because she's going to be so far away, it's good news because she's only an email away, and we finally have that friend we've wanted to visit in New Zealand for some time. But Maya Angelou, Alana, wrote a poem called "Touched By An Angel," and I wanted to dedicate a portion of this poem to you as somebody who's been an angel, whose labor of love here has touched the lives of so many abuse survivors in the city. And just before I read these closing words, colleagues, we honor all kinds of people here in front of City Council, heroes and heroines, people who've been able to win sporting awards, people who've been able to lead countries. We've had the UN Secretary-General Kofi Annan here, but I can't think of somebody in this city who has more directly impacted some of the most hopeless residents that we represent here in Los Angeles as Alana. So with that, I'd like to dedicate this from Maya Angelou. "We, unaccustomed to courage, exiles from delight, live coiled in shells of loneliness until love leaves its high holy temple and comes into our sight to liberate us into life. If we are bold, love strikes away the chains of fear from our souls." And Alana, you have done that not only for us, but for so many people. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rocky Delgado to say a few words as well.
Thank you very much, Eric. I think it's appropriate that Eric use poetry to describe Alana's career, because I do believe her actions as an advocate, as a lawyer, as someone who stands up for those who do not have a voice, has been very poetic. Every stage in her career in the city attorney's office for over 20 years, and by the way, she started when she was 10, have been, have provided that kind of poetry for people who are in the most need. She started as a deputy city attorney, serving first as running the domestic violence unit, and has now served as the special assistant to the city attorney for domestic violence issues. She has worked across the city, across the state. Eric pointed out, she helped sponsor 40 bills, which resulted in 94 laws, 94 new laws because of this individual in the state of California. The most recent of which, by the way, we now are allowed to take guns out of the homes of victims of domestic violence, so that nothing escalates to a level that might be more dangerous and difficult for all of us to deal with. She is quite a leader for the state of California and for Los Angeles. As Eric pointed out, she is going to New Zealand, so, and she has told me, we're all welcome to come visit. She says she has a compound there, so we're going to be in a good, in a good place. But Alana has certainly provided a vibrant voice for those who are on the downside of advantage and those who cannot speak for themselves. And so I'm pleased and honored to have been a small part of her career here in the City of Angels, and it is with that a great pleasure that I now present to her this certificate, along with Eric, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, and her dedication to the rights of those who are in most need of her help.
Okay, Rocky, before we hear you in the presentation, let me call on Councilmember Tom Labond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Delgado, get your picture right there. A lot of congratulations. I think the, one of the many remarkable things said is about the number of items resulted in legislation. In all different roles we have in the city, whether you're in public works, or in public safety, or in city attorney's office, after you serve, if you'd look back and see how many trees that you planted, you planted a lot of trees in legislation that makes a difference in the lives of many people. But I'm also pleased you're going to New Zealand, because we have a sister city in New Zealand, in Auckland, and we need energy from people in New Zealand to help that bond a little, and I hope you could find your way. Helen Clark is the prime minister, and Kath Thizzard is the former governor general, and so there's a lot of old LA fire trucks down there, too, in their museums. So you could fit right at home if you're in North Island in Auckland. But congratulations on your year in service, your years of service, but also congratulations in looking back that you made a big difference in the lives of many, many people in this city. Thank you, Alana.
Councilmember Grohl.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski, and I've had the pleasure of knowing Alana for many, many years, and as someone that has, I think, as mentioned by both Rocky and Eric and Tom, changed the lives and sometimes saved the lives of many women in the City of Los Angeles because of your legislation and your dedication. And I think a lot of people, in the beginning, Alana told you, this can't be done, it's going to be difficult, you have to challenge this law, and you persevered. You said, this is worth it, I am going to make this my cause, and did it, I think, proudly in representing the City of Los Angeles. And so I'm pleased to be here today to congratulate you and tell you, I'm not sure what we're going to do without you here in the City of Los Angeles, it's going to be tough shoes to fill. But I think many of us not only feel you've been a leader, but a friend, and someone that the city can say proudly was an employee of the city attorney's office and someone who saved lives through your hard and dedicated work. Congratulations.
Thank you. Alana?
All right. I do want to take, being a lawyer, I would like to make a couple of remarks, and thank you so much for these remarks, and thank you, thank you. Two wonderful guys. The City of Los Angeles, to me, has been one of the best experiences in my life. I've been here 25 years. I love this city, I love the city attorney's office, and I'm so grateful for the privilege and the opportunity they've had to be part of this city. And I just want to go over, please, to take a minute of some of the first in the City of Los Angeles around domestic violence issues. This is the very first city to take prosecutions of domestic violence seriously. In a survey in our office in 1977, of the numbers of cases of domestic violence that we actually prosecuted, in 1977, none, zero. We didn't prosecute any. The following year, when we opened a domestic violence unit, a very small unit, 4,000 cases were filed by our office. We were the first to have a domestic violence prosecution unit, not only in the United States, but I believe in the world, and has been persisting since 1978. We use community-based advocates, we prosecute the very first policy to prosecute without the victim's testimony in these cases, so she doesn't have to endure this, the agony and the pain very often of trying to prosecute herself, trying to testify. But City Council has been repeatedly in our corner in developing the policies in the city attorney's office that have helped us persist, the support for the legislation, the expansion in 1994 of our unit from seven people to now 37 people, making it the largest domestic violence prosecution unit in the world, $5 million funding for battered women's shelters, developing the city domestic violence task force, developing the domestic violence workplace policy for the city, as well as supporting actively the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, and carrying that policy forward, as Eric has mentioned, and as Rocky has really consistently supported that issue. There are continuing challenges as I leave, and I would just like to highlight where we, I believe, need so much City Council support, and that's finding housing, affordable housing, for victims of domestic violence, so that they aren't left and trapped in situations that they can't leave. Support also for the domestic violence response teams that are integrated in the Los Angeles Police Department, that provide immediate support to victims at the scene. They are in very, very few jurisdictions right now, and we hope that they could go citywide. We also face the concrete problem of early release of defendants who are convicted of domestic violence crimes, that very often, for one-year sentence, they're actually serving less than 30 days. It's a very difficult trial issue to carry forward, but yet the city attorney's trial deputies are the true heroes, I think, to go every day into trials, win cases at phenomenal rates. The city attorney's office maintains, as I can tell, the highest conviction rate in the United States of difficult cases, not simply selecting the cases that we know will be easy to win, but are very, very hard cases. I think success in prevention is very, very hard to measure, but we have a high conviction rate. We file cases that other jurisdictions wouldn't blink about rejecting, but most of all, the numbers of homicides in this city have dropped by at least two-thirds since we began this concentration. It's certainly not due only to prosecution, although I think that's a key element, but also to the great support that the city has provided in services and directly through the City Council. But finally, I just am so grateful to the 20 years of work with the city, with the city attorney, with Jim Hahn, and now with Rocky Delgado, really showing that a prosecutor, an elected prosecutor, can do such a strong effort and make such a change. It's been a huge privilege to be here. But finally, I want to say, in the language of Maori that I will be trying to adapt to, ki'ora mates, and please come down and see me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please thank Alana Bowman for all of her service once again. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Labond, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Ray Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 14 members present, and a call, Madam President.
All right, let us run through the agenda. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues, and members of the public who are here looking at city business in action, I want to introduce a special guest who's no stranger to these chambers, but my counterpart over at the L.A. Unified School District, school board president, Jose Weisart.
Welcome, thank you.
He's making sure the city's in fine shape.
Very good. Let us run through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, Ms. Perry seconds, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are also approved.
On the regular agenda, Madam President, items noted for public hearing. Item number one is the 2005 Annual Weed and Brush Abatement Ordinance authorizing removal of the weeds.
There are no cards. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on item number one? If not, the hearing is open and closing. Could I ask for a quiet, please, in the chamber, we're trying to conduct our business? All right, we will open and close that hearing. Item one is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved.
Item number two is also a public hearing item. It's an alley vacation in Council District 15, and the instruction should be to the city attorney, excuse me, the city engineer, to proceed with the vacation if there are no protests.
All right, there are no cards submitted, so I believe we can proceed. So Ms. Hahn moves the city engineer recommendation for the confirmation of the protest, of the vacation. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved.
On item number three, the applicant consents to a continuance to April the 13th.
Without objection, that will be the order on item number three.
Item number four is also a public hearing item, and that's a confirmation of 1911 Act assessment in Council District 7.
Again, there are no cards in protest on the appeal on that matter, so the matters before us, and Mr. Padilla moves the confirmation of the assessment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items five through 23, and I believe on item number eight, that matter was continued in committee, and I believe will be continued in council.
Do we have a date to which we will continue item eight?
I believe it was continued for a week in committee, so I don't know if council wishes to continue that.
All right, we will continue that also one week from today in council. Members, are there any items special? Item, Mr. Labond.
Yeah, thank you, item number six and item number 21.
All right, Mr. Labond has called items six and 21. Councilmember Hahn?
10 and 11.
Items 10 and 11 are called special. Mr. Parks?
We have number, item number eight, continued, it did not get out of committee yesterday.
Right, we just continue that for one week. That will be the order. Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry, did you have an item you wanted to call special? I'm sorry, I thought you were calling, okay. Mr. Smith?
15 and 18.
Items 15 and items 18 for Mr. Smith. Mr. Viegosa?
Items number 22 and 23.
22 and 23 for Mr. Viegosa. All right, we have a number of items that are called specials, members. The remaining items, 5, 7, 9, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, 19, and 20 are now before us. Seeing no others being called special, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved.
Number five, please.
We will send item five forthwith. All right, the city clerk has asked that everything go forthwith today, since there is no council meeting date on Friday, and number five in particular was an ordinance with 12 votes that can go forthwith today. Next items, Madam Clerk?
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 24 through 62, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, we do have cards on item 54 and 57, so we will call those special. Any other specials, members, 24 through 62? Mr. Parks?
53.
53 is called special by Mr. Parks. Mr. Padilla?
Ms. Missakowski, item 54 has been called special. I also request that we take the item out of order, it shouldn't take very long.
All right, so we will take item 54 first, if there's a, Mr. Parks?
Also, can you have 53 taken out of order? We have a community person.
All right, we'll take 53 second. Other items special, that's 24 through 62. Seeing none, those matters are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Let us take the items special as we, we still have public comment as well, let's take the two items called special. First, Mr. Padilla, item 54.
And I do believe there's a couple of speaker cards there, let's hear from them first, and then I'm happy to speak on the item.
This is a required public hearing at the city council level, so let me call forward at this time, Mary Ann Haverhill and Robert Lee.
Good morning, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today. We want to say a special thank you to Council President Padilla for presenting this motion to the council to waive up to $35,000 in fees and permits for a new building that we are planning for the Northeast Valley, and also to our friend Tony Cardenas for helping us in presenting that motion last week. MEND is a social service agency, stands for Meet Each Need with D-N-D, we've been around since 1971, and we are primarily a volunteer organization. Last year, 1,800 volunteers worked with us in providing emergency food, clothing, furniture, medical and dental care, English classes, job training, and a variety of other services. We have outgrown our space. In 1996, we doubled the size of our building to its current 20,000 square feet, and at that time, we were serving about 11,000 people a month. Today, we're serving 38,000 people each month with our services designed specifically for very, very low-income people. And so we are very excited about the opportunity to expand our premises on a new site near our present center, we'll keep our present building, and then build this new building on the corner of San Fernando Road and Pierce to house a number of our programs. And the former use of this land was a very dumpy old trailer park that was really a slumlord situation, and there were only four tenants left when we purchased the property. We've helped them relocate, and now we'd like to build this beautiful new building, which we think will be really a model for the Northeast Valley and for Pacoima, where we are located, and will certainly help us in meeting each need with dignity. I'd like to turn it over to our contractor, Robert Lee.
My name is Robert Lee, and my company is RE Lee Design and Construction, and we have been engaged into design and build the new facility in Pacoima. I'd like to thank Alex Padilla and the City of Los Angeles Council for its vital support in this project. We have been collaborating with MEND's Board of Directors and staff on the design-build of this project. Through the design process, the new 40,000-square-foot facility has been carefully planned to maximize the space to serve even more members of this community while expanding its menu of services. We, that is our team of architects, engineers, and designers, have focused on our efforts on the MEND project to inspire, that has inspired MEND's philosophy, to serve its clients in a most dignified manner. And we are pleased, sorry, a place where the clients can walk in and be welcomed in the new reception center and continue through his or her MEND experience, encouraged by the hopeful surroundings created just for them. MEND has been instrumental in rebuilding the lives of so many of its clients and giving new meaning to the lives of so many of its volunteers. I'm very proud to be associated with a wonderful organization whose goals are so simple and pure. Again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, now let me call on Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. As you've heard from the presentation here, not only is this, this isn't just an everyday application before the City of Los Angeles to construct a building in the city. MEND is an organization that's been around for more than 30 years with really the most critical purposes in our society. They help the poorest of the poor in the San Fernando Valley. It's a place where I got my start in volunteerism and community service. I've watched over the years them grow out of garages and people's homes into a permanent location and expand. The number of poor people living in the San Fernando Valley has grown exponentially over the years, and so has MEND's services and operations. It reached the point where they needed this new building, and again, no better cause than to turn around what truly was a blighted problem property into a building that represents hope for so many families, just struggling to get by and struggling to get ahead in life. So I'm proud to be supportive of the project. The motion is one that will minimize the fees that they have to pay to building and safety. New city policy prohibits us from waiving the fees entirely, which is what I would really love to do, but with this motion, we're going to have MEND pay just the minimal fees at cost for the Building and Safety Department. And what I would like to do at this time is offer a verbal amending motion to have the balance of the fees, whatever can't be completely relieved for MEND to not be paid by the applicant, but be paid by my real property trust fund in Seventh Council District. So, well, I'm happy to provide the clerk with the account numbers and all the technical information, but I think they have enough information with what I just said to have the balance of the fees paid for out of my real property trust fund, so that it's zero cost at the end of the day to the applicant, and they can ensure that all the fundraising that they do, which is difficult to do, goes straight into the building and straight into the services that are needed so much. And by ways of a cheap plug, colleagues, I hope you're all listening, you've all been invited to a reception next Tuesday, March 29th, at the Skirball Center. Yes, it's my birthday celebration, but as I've done in previous years, we're raising money for a charity, and this year, MEND is the charity, so we hope to see you there, and I thank you for your support. Do I have a second?
I think there is a second.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank, Mr. Zine seconded it. All right, members, we have this matter now before us, which is the waiver of the portion of the fees with the amendment to have the other fees covered by the real estate, real property trust fund from CD7. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, that matter, as amended, is now before us. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President, sorry to press the button. I just, I just want to clarify one thing in terms of our, I know we're discussing this in, in budget and finance, and there'd been a couple motions we had put forward before that had, for similar things, for, I think, Sisters of Mercy or Daughters of Charity, I'm sorry, I got the two mixed up, but we're building something in, in the district, and in the past, we've, we've held those in committee, and I believe there's an overall policy that we're talking about right now. Maybe Mr. Parks could elucidate whether that fits into this or not, and, and if so, if this is a time in which we can do this, I'd love to see the other ones go through, too.
Councilmember Parks?
That will be coming, hopefully, before council, before we start the next budgetary processes, but several things that we've done in the past, we're asking that we no longer do them, and many of them are waiving of fees, also the issue of fees that we charge people for vehicles in the past, where we've given city surplus property, those are the kind of things that have created major holes in the budget. And we also are moving forward on the ordinance that deals with special events that we've been waiting for, for a couple of decades. But these are the kind of things that we've... But these are the kind of things that we've plugged in that we believe are creating major holes in the budget, and the issue is that we hope that the CIO is going to have that document to everyone before we get to that... To the budgetary process. But those are the kind of things that we're trying to plug holes in the budget so that we are not... Have a runaway of waiving of fees that reduces revenue from the department side.
Until we have that, then, are we in a place, policy-wise, then, where we can move other ones forward until that policy is in place and that will be not heard?
Do we have an idea on the number of the costs? Because I know we're holding some, and this didn't come before budget, so I'm not aware of what the costs are on the other ones.
I would have to look at that, but I think it was certainly under $100,000. It was similar building and safety fees and a couple of other fees as well, but I can try to find those numbers. And I don't know what other ones are out there and what, you know, slippery slope this creates in terms of a bigger hole in the budget. That's the only issue I have. It's nothing about the particular one here, and I think each one of these is a very good... Are very good projects that are nonprofits that do that hard work in each one of our communities.
What I'll make a commitment to is we'll go through the budget calendar, and any that's waiting, we'll look at them before that policy to at least get them reviewed before council.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that concludes the discussion on this matter. We do have the motion as was presented and amended before us. Let's vote on the matter. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That matter is approved, and as we said, it will go forthwith as well. Per the request of Mr. Parks, we will now hear item number 53.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that Mrs. Candace Hurd come up to the microphone, please. Mrs. Candace Hurd is the mother of a recent homicide victim by the name of David Kirksey, who happened to have been a victim of a homicide at West 47th Street and Southwestern on May 29th, 2004. We're asking for a reward motion, and what's unfortunate is this is one of 100 homicides that we've had in the 8th District in two consecutive years. And so I ask her to come to make a plea to the general public to give assistance as it relates to trying to bring a conclusion to this homicide investigation. No.
My name is Candace Hurd, and I'm here today because my son of 19 years old was gunned down on 47th and Western in the worstest way. He was shot six times. He got shot three times in a penis area, three times in the chest, and... I feel that any man that can shoot another man in the groin like that, do have no remorse for life. They call heart killers. They don't feel remorse whatsoever, and that's the worstest way for any man to die. And the part that hurt so much... He got killed at 5:30, and I just seen him about 2 o'clock at my house cleaning up. And before I left the house, he said, "Mommy, where are you going?" I told him I was going to pay some bills, and I was going to Pasadena, and the part that hurt me is, he asked me, "Can he go?" And I told him, "I'll be right back." And I told him, "Once I come back, we're going to go out to eat with him and my three other kids." And as I'm calling home to tell him to get ready, my daughter called me, told me he got Anyway, if you're a mother, if you're a mother and you have children, just go for a man or a female. You have children, only a mother can feel this pain that I'm feeling if you lost a child. You only can feel my pain I'm going through if you didn't lose a child. But if you lost a child, you know exactly the pain I'm going through. I lost 20 pounds. I can't think right of going through depression. My kids are messed up in the head. One of my kids is trying to kill himself. And I'm trying to keep the house going strong, but I'm doing the best I can. I'm doing the best I can as a single parent. And the worstest thing that... The worstest part that hurt me is that I heard that when he got shot, he walked through the alley with six other guys, a car pulled up, and said, "Hey, come here for a minute." And my son was kind of vulnerable. He went to the car, and they let the windows down, and my son told his friends, "Oh, man, this guy's got some guns." And this one other guy that was in front of him, a little shorter guy, about 16 years old, he took the little boy and threw him out the way and took the bullets. When my son got shot, throwing the other guy, the young guy out the way, when he tried to turn and run, he got shot in the shoulder. He got shot in the shoulder. He tried to keep running, he fell down on the ground. These guys got out the car and literally shot him up all down below and at the top. And by me being the parent I am, I'm not going to let these guys get away with it. I'm doing my footwork as a parent. I'm walking around, talking to many people. I know the chances I'm taking are very definite and is putting my life in danger, but I don't care because we've been losing our young children within the last two decades. A lot of parents out there lost a lot of children, lost their children, and they leave it to the police department to take care of it, but parents got to do their work, too. And knowing the fact this is my child that got killed, I'm not letting these guys get away with it. I'm going to find them. I'm going to find them. I'm going to do the part I was supposed to do as a parent. I appreciate you guys take this consideration, and ask the public for help. If you know anybody, you know anything about this guy that got killed on 47th and Western at 5:30 PM on May 29th, 2004, please give the police department... Please get the police department a call because my kids are so messed up. I'm messed up, and this is to all women out there that have children. You can imagine what I feel like. Imagine carrying a child for nine months, going through labor pains, taking care of that baby, feeding that baby, watching them make their first walk, going to school, watching the first time they talk, and then to lose them from guys in the street trying to play it after God to take another child's life. It's not right. When they killed my son, they killed part of me. I'm not going to let these guys get away with it. I'm not. I'm going to find them, and you know who you are out there that did it. Don't think you got away with anything. You can run, but you can't hide. You're going to bring them off to the wrong person, and you're going to think you did something smart, but you ain't going to know that person is going to know the person of the person you killed. This is not right, and I feel these guys need to get the injustice. They walk around living their everyday life, spending holidays with their family, while my son is all dead for nothing. My son deserved this, and he cried when he got shot. He called for me, and I wasn't even there. So I appreciate it. You guys go ahead and prove this a word letter so we can put these guys behind bars because I'm quite sure as many other parents that lost their children behind the same guys that killed my son. Same guys that killed my son, killed other people out there that they don't know who is the guys that killed their child. And I guarantee you, same guys that killed my son, when everything comes to a closure, everything's going to be put together. Two and two will be put together, and they're going to realize that the other victims out there that's dead, these guys had something to do with it. So I appreciate your consideration if you guys approve this word letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Did you have any?
We'd just like to ask the public that any information go to 77th Detectives and that we ask for a unanimous vote on the $50,000 reward.
Mr. Labonge?
Just technical on the 2000 date on there. I don't know if it's the correct date.
2004, Mr. Parks had indicated. All right, this matter is now before us. I ask you, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved, and we will send that as well forthwith today. There's been one more request to have one item taken out of order. That's item number 57. Let me recognize at this time Councilmember Padilla. Mr. Padilla, did you want to call the cards first? We do have a number of cards on item 57. There's a required public hearing. Did you want the cards submitted? Mr. Garcetti?
Why don't we have the speakers go first, and then Mr. Padilla and I will do a little presentation together about the day, so why don't we?
All right, let me call the speaker cards. Ask those who have submitted cards to line up. First, we'll hear from Eloisa Clementich from the mayor's office, who will be followed by Carlos Antonio Baccaruno, Sergio Barahona. Please come forward and speak.
On behalf of the mayor's office, we're here to support the motion. Archbishop Romero not only represents hope for El Salvador but for many throughout Central and South America, so we support the motion. Thank you.
All right.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Baccarano. I'm here representing the Los Angeles-San Salvador Sister City Committee, Sala de Salvadorian American Leadership and Educational Fund, and I want to invite everybody here. I want to thank you, I want to thank the members of the council, Mr. President, and the authors of this motion for introducing this historical motion in support of declaring March 24th a day of remembrance of Monsignor Romero. Monsignor Romero is a hero, is our hero, is a leader, is someone who we respect, a man who was brutally killed 24 years ago. I remember when I left El Salvador in 1980, November 5th, 1980. I left precisely because in El Salvador there was no justice. When they killed Monsignor Romero on March 24th, if they killed Monsignor Romero, we said, "We're not safe. We've got to leave." And it was precisely what happened on July 12th, 1980. I lost one of my brothers. After that, I lost two more brothers because of the war. So Monsignor Romero for us represents a man who became the voice of the voiceless. Monsignor Romero was a very humble man who fought for justice, economic freedom for all Salvadorians. I want to thank you for introducing this motion and encourage you to vote for it. I, as you can see, invited a lot of community members, organizations such as Clinica Monsignor Romero, Carecen. These are historical organizations that have been working since 1980 for issues like, you know, education, justice, peace in El Salvador. I want to thank all the council members who have joined me in our trips to El Salvador in the past, Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Antonio Villaregosa, who joined us in 2003, and recently, Councilmember Reyes, and of course, also representatives from Mayor James Han. It was precisely because of them that this is happening right now. Your support is crucial, and I want to continue remembering Monsignor Romero in the future. Thank you very much.
There were additional cards submitted. Let me call if there's anyone else who'd like to speak. Maria Esther Tejada, Meredith Brown, Eduardo Gonzalez, Ana Grande, Sister Anna Maria Perez, and Cynthia Uyoya. Uyoya.
My name is Sergio Barahona. On behalf of the Central American Resort Center, Carecen, a well-known, community-based organization in the Pico Union area, we would like to invite the city council to declare March 24th Remembrance Day for Monsignor Romero. For us, Monsignor Romero is so tied to our community. Carlos already explained how his example really played a big role for our community, not only in El Salvador but wherever the Salvadorian community is in the world. Unfortunately, when he passed away, when he was assassinated, he became a big hope for the Salvadorian community in the United States, and we would like to really have his day. We would like to honor him in Los Angeles, where most of the Salvadorian community is in the United States. Thank you very much.
Mi nombre es Maria Esther Tejada, y yo viví el... lo que Monsignor Romero vivió en El Salvador.
My name is Maria Esther Tejada, and I lived what Monsignor Romero lived, which was repression.
Él luchó siempre para la gente pobre, la gente desprotegida, y los más desprotegidos de las personas que gobiernan en los países de uno.
He always fought for the oppressed, for the poor.
Y por eso él vive siempre en nuestras mentes, y a donde quiera que andemos vamos a organizarnos, así como los hemos organizado en Pico Junior de la Clinica Monsignor Romero.
Monsignor Romero will always live in our hearts, and we will always follow his example.
Porque él siempre luchó por las injusticias y por las personas que mueren, así como la persona que acaba de hablar que hasta estaba llorando.
Because he always fought against injustices, like the case of the woman who just spoke of the killing of his son.
Y el pensamiento de él siempre lo tendremos en mente, y a donde quiera que estemos vamos a luchar para la gente más protegida y los vecinos que somos más pobres.
We will follow his... The way he thought, the way he fought for the poor in Los Angeles.
Así como aquí en Los Ángeles que hemos andamos siempre, organizados en la organización de Pico Junior en acción de la Clinica Monsignor Romero, trabajando con los concejales, con la policía, con el abogado de la ciudad.
We will continue following his example, working locally, like with organizations like Clinica Monsignor Romero.
Así como hemos cerrado el hotel Holland y hemos andado en las licores, monitoreando para que no le vendan a los jóvenes y que no sean pandilleros.
The best way to follow his example is by working locally, saving the youth so they can... They don't buy liquor in local liquor.
Hemos cerrado también los ales y hemos andado, este, monitoreando licores para la seguridad de nuestro vecindario, y organizados es como vamos a seguir luchando, y siempre el Monsignor Romero vivirá en nuestros pensamientos y luchando como él para bien de la comunidad.
We will continue Monsignor Romero Legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Meredith Brown. I'm the chair of the Los Angeles County Bars Immigration Section, and very briefly, and not only on behalf of the Central American community, but also on behalf of those of us who have stood alongside the Central American community, the figure of Monsignor Romero is a figure of inspiration, and I think the City of Los Angeles should support this motion particularly now in these anti-immigrant times. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ana Grande, and I am the coordinator for the Ministry of Young Adults for the Los Angeles Archdiocese. However, today I come to you, ladies and gentlemen of council, as a second-generation Salvadoran. I did not live the struggles of the war, but I did see my compatriots come here fleeing from such disastrous things in their own country. The one thing that always held them up was a man, was the spirit of Monsignor Romero. Out of the 100,000 young adults that I serve at the Archdiocese, over 55,000 are Salvadorans, and they always come with his spirit. I ask that if we can name a street after a writer, after an artist, that we also give a day for somebody that has changed humanity.
My name is Eduardo Gonzalez, and I am the executive director of Clinica Monsignor Oscar Anofo Romero, which is a federally qualified community health center, serving the larger community of Los Angeles, but specifically the Pico Union, Westlake, and Northeast Los Angeles districts. We provide quality and affordable primary healthcare services and health education to over 20,000 individuals on a yearly basis. We at Clinica are proud to bear the name of Monsignor, and we strive to fulfill Monsignor Romero's visions of justice, of service to those in greatest need who have no other resource available to them. resource available to them. Monsignor Romero's love for his people was so deep that he continued with his work despite the certainty of his assassination after many death threats. Tomorrow is a very special day for all of us, because we will commemorate the 25th anniversary of Monsignor's assassination. But tomorrow shall not be a day of mourning, but rather the opposite, a day to celebrate and to rejoice, because although Monsignor is not physically with us and present with us, his words and his teachings are more lively than ever before. Recently, I received a list of many of the places that are celebrating Monsignor Romero's anniversary, and they are throughout the world, from Asia to Europe to Africa to Australia to the United States. Today, you members of the city council of this great city of angels are about to recognize Monsignor Romero by proclaiming March 24th as Monsignor Romero's Remembrance Days. For your leadership and your wisdom, on behalf of our board of directors, our staff, and the many thousands of clients that we serve on a daily basis, we thank you.
Good morning, my name is Cynthia Uyoya, I'm a member of Puya, Pico Union in Action, from Clinica Monsignor Romero. I'm here today to support and thanks to all of you for supporting all Salvadorans living in the city of L.A. by declaring March 24th as Monsignor Romero's Day. And also, I want to let... Sorry, kind of nervous. I also want to let you know that Monsignor Romero lives in each Salvadoran's heart, and especially in youth as me. I know he's my hero and my inspiration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Sister Anna Maria, voy a hablar en español porque vengo del África. Monsignor Romero, yo soy oblata del corazón de Jesús, llamadas las del sagrado corazón.
I am a sister of the Order of the Oblatas del Corazón de Jesús.
Del Sagrado Corazón. Trabajamos muy de cerca con Monsignor Romero.
We work very closely with Monsignor Romero.
Y en el año 80 me da la bendición para que yo pueda ir al África.
And in the year 1980, he blessed me so that I could go to Africa.
Porque él decía, este, siempre los pobres damos lo que tenemos, y África necesita ahora de misioneras.
Because he used to say that the poor always gives, give away, and that's why she wanted to go and start a minister in Africa.
Y esto me ha ayudado enormemente, su presencia ha estado siempre conmigo en esos países.
And his presence has always been with me and has always helped me when I am working in those countries.
Por eso vengo ahora a agradecerles este día que ustedes quieren otorgarle a Monsignor Romero.
And that's why I'm here, to thank you for that day that you're going to recognize for Monsignor Romero.
Porque él es un profeta de nuestros tiempos que luchó por la justicia y los derechos de los pobres.
Because he is a prophet of our times, that he fought for justice, for the poor.
Este reconocimiento no solo servirá para nuestro pueblo salvadoreño sino para todo el mundo entero.
And in fact, this recognition will not only serve for the Salvadoran people but for the people of the world.
Por eso les decimos gracias de ya por este reconocimiento que le dan a Monsignor.
And that's why we tell you right now, thank you. Thank you very much for this recognition for Monsignor Romero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us now return to Councilmember Garcetti, who that closes the public hearing.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam President. Gracias a la comunidad por su presencia y sus palabras. Thank you to the community for being here and for your words here today. I want to thank Council President Padilla as well for co-presenting this with me. I know there are many from Mr. Villarogosa and his work with the Central American community, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruel, certainly all the folks that have participated in, and most notably Mr. Reyes, who I know would have liked to have been here very much today, unfortunately could not be here today but is here very strongly in spirit to recognize this day. Monsignor Romero once said that "We suffer with those who have disappeared, those who have had to flee their homes, and those who have been tortured." En español, sufrimos con los que han desaparecido, con los que han tenido de huir de sus hogares, y con los que han sido torturados. Monsignor Romero became to an entire nation the voice of the voiceless. He used the authority of his position as archbishop to ensure that the poor, the dispossessed, those who had a view politically different from that of their government, were not forgotten. He risked his life every time he spoke, as did so many Salvadorans during the past history of that country. Twenty-five years ago tomorrow, colleagues, Monsignor Romero was martyred for standing up for the Salvadoran people, standing up for the voice of a nation, and standing up for justice. Before he was murdered though, he said, "I do not believe in death without resurrection. If they kill me, I shall arise in the Salvadoran people." Again, en español, él dijo, antes de ser asesinado, dijo, "No creo en la muerte sin la resurrección. Si me matan, yo surgiré en el pueblo del Salvador." And certainly, we see that here today, from somebody who might have been born here, the child of Salvadoran immigrants, all the way to people who lost their family and lives, and people who fought alongside with Monsignor Romero for peace and for justice. This is not just something which is new as we create the sister-city relationship here, but as we look at the ties in Clinica Oscar Romero, which I'm very proud to have in my district, the great work of Salaf and all the Salvadoran community that's here. I remember when we went down, Carlos and I, and Mr. Villarogosa joined us as well, and then later Mr. Reyes went, and we went to a museum where we looked at the folks who had been killed during the Salvadoran Civil War. And in one, this little dusty museum there, you see some of our adjourning motions that we, not us, it was different people in these seats, made in memory of those martyrs, including Monsignor Romero. And in their memory, we've seen the ties that our communities have had for a long, long time, so it seems fitting that we mark this 25-year anniversary, that we continue to call for justice in this city and in this world and in El Salvador as well, and so I ask for your support and I thank the community for being part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the public speaker certainly spoke very eloquently, and everything that needs to be said has been said. I just wanted to rise proudly to support the resolution in front of us, also wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Reyes especially, he wasn't able to be here but was the first signature on this resolution. And to say a little bit as to why it is important to do so. Mr. Reyes, and this may be in part a tribute to Mr. Reyes, because he more so than any one of us around this horseshoe, stands up on a regular basis and speaks to the need for our, the young people in our society, the young people of our city, to have role models, to have icons, to have people that they look up to, people that they should emulate themselves of. And certainly, Monsignor Romero, with his actions and life and his inspiration in his assassination, has served as one of those icons, not just for the people of El Salvador but for people from around the world. And so, I think in that spirit, the resolution before us is very appropriate and very timely. And second, because tomorrow marks the 25th anniversary, it should serve as a reminder to everybody that it wasn't that long ago. If you really stop and think about it, we all can probably recall where we were, what we were doing just 25 years ago. So as adults, we know that as long of a time period as 25 years may mean to us, it really wasn't that long ago, it wasn't even a lifetime ago. And so, we have our work cut out for us in El Salvador, in the United States, and around the world, to constantly fight against oppression, to constantly fight against violence and social injustice. And for the young people who may not have been around 25 years ago, or may not remember where they were 25 years ago, that's an important lesson too, that it wasn't that long ago. And just as quickly as things can change for the better, if we drop our guard, things can also change for the worse. And so, the struggle for justice, the struggle to treat one another humanely across the street and across the world, is a struggle that we have to keep up each and every day. So I want to thank all the community members for being here, especially to the young people who spoke at the podium, you're very brave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Councilmember Villarogosa. Mr. Villarogosa.
Yes, today we will be approving this resolution to commemorate that event that happened 25 years ago, the assassination of Archbishop Oscar Romero. But I choose to remember his life, because it's his life that makes him such a great and visionary human being. I'm a Catholic, and when you, one of the things that, one of the notions of Roman Catholicism is this idea of social justice. It's forgotten sometimes when you hear some of those who only selectively choose from the broad range of issues that are important to Catholics, but one of them is social justice. And when you think of Oscar Romero, he was in the great tradition of the Latin American cardinals and archbishops and bishops, they understood that to, that it was critical to live your faith, and that while we could talk about all of us being the children of God, that it was essential that we do for others. And in many ways, he died because he was so faithful to those notions of social justice. He died, remember, while he was giving mass, in the middle of the most sacred tradition in our church. He was killed and assassinated by cowards who chose to kill him in that most sacred part of our traditions as Catholics. And so, I say to Salaf and the Clinica de Monsignor Oscar Romero, the Central American Research and Policy Institute, and all of the people who are here today, thank you for coming, thank you for raising this issue, thank you, colleagues who have presented this issue today. This is very important for us to acknowledge the great faith of this man, this sense of the need to speak out for those for whom God and our faith have always been first and foremost, so thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes the members of the council who would like to speak, so this matter is now before us. Item 57, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That matter is approved. Thank you, thank you for those who came down today. Members, we've had a request to take another item out of order, so if there's no objection, we're going to hear item 21, and recognize Mr. Labange, there's a presentation both from the general manager of Department of Transportation, and I understand a presentation on the screen. So, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Members, I appreciate if you all would look at your notes, this is the MTA Long Range Planning 2005 Plan, as a MTA board member, which I sit on. We discussed this recently and requested that our department come over, there's going to be a screen, and I'll ask Mr. Tonda to introduce his staff and make a presentation.
Thank you very much. Members of the council, Wayne Tonda, General Manager, LA DOT. Joining me today is James Okazaki, Assistant General Manager, and our bureau chief Harold Paul Burr. I've been asked to present a very succinct presentation on our efforts to provide input into the MTA's Long Range Transportation Plan, and I'll do just that. The MTA Long Range Transportation Plan is a very important planning and as well as programming tool. It sets the course for the major transportation investments in the coming years. The timeframe is 25 years, the update occurs about every five years, the last update occurred in 2001. The categories of major improvements include freeways, major city streets, transit, a thing called TSM, TDM, Transportation System and Demand Management, as well as goods movement. Going over the first category again very briefly, our input into the freeway improvements include a number of projects, and by the way, the total number of projects being submitted through the joint effort of LA DOT, the Department of Public Works, the Port of Los Angeles, and LAX, is 165 total projects. About 90% of those are non-port and lawa projects. Certainly, some of those improvements are on freeways. The focus of these projects that we've identified as important priorities have as its goal relieving congestion on major corridors, taking improvements at the freeway bottlenecks, which are freeway-to-freeway interchanges, improvements of auxiliary lanes, as well as high occupancy vehicle lanes. Although it may be difficult for you to see on the screen, in the report that you have, along with the listing of projects dated March 23rd, in other words, today, was the latest update, the screen shows a number of improvement projects by example, of the types of projects that are on the list. The green circles represent interchange-to-interchange improvements. These are big-ticket items that go from a quarter billion dollars to a half billion dollars. The elongated areas are numbers of improvements along very congested corridors. It's almost intuitive, a priority for us would be relieving congestion on Route 101 in the valley, as well as from the valley into the downtown area. It includes improvements along 405. One of those improvements-
Mr. Tanda, just explain that green around there signifies the interchange, is that right?
That is correct. We have on this particular map four green circles, each one around an interchange. The oblong red represent the entire corridor. This includes the most heavily congested interchange in the United States, that's Route 101 and 405. It's obvious, it's intuitive that improvements need to go there, we've identified improvements of the order of magnitude of $500 million. This is the same type of description for projects south of the Santa Monica area. Wanted to go over arterials, the second category of improvements, these are things on city of Los Angeles streets, they follow a similar type of formula, corridor improvements from roadway widenings to improvement of signal systems, along with the bottlenecks of our arterial street systems, these are at our intersections. We also have identified through the fine effort the Department of Public Works, improvements around bridges to increase capacity, as well as to ensure accessibility. We also have a category called tunnels and grade separations. The number of projects here form really the bulk of the improvements that we've identified in the list to be submitted to MTA. This is just a small sampling of the types of improvements that we've identified in the valley, we've just shown five here, the complete listing is in your set of documents. This just represents a few of the many projects south of the Santa Monica area, from the Lincoln Avenue Bridge widening over on the west side of L.A., through the San Fernando Road widening near the east part of L.A. This, this, and let me pause it a moment here, these are projects that we feel are important, these are not necessarily the projects that would ultimately come to fruition in the community. All of the projects that have an impact on the community would obviously go through a community impact process to ensure that the concerns of our neighborhoods are reflected in what is ultimately built. The third category, transit improvements, from rail and transit centers through metro, bus, all the way through the city's dash system. Two maps here for the same purpose of just being illustrative. In the valley area, there are two rail projects shown, the one that is in the middle would be the extension of the Red Line from North Hollywood to Silmar. The one shown on the right of the screen is one that we're referring to as the Alameda Corridor North. It would be, if constructed, about a billion dollars' worth of improvements to grade separate commuter and freight trains. This is as much as congestion relief as to provide safety. This is the location where we've had a number of very tragic traffic crashes. Again, for the purposes of illustration are some key projects to the south rail projects. I think all of these would be familiar to you, the extension of the Red Line from its current terminus at Wiltshire Western over to the UCLA area. The map- The map shows the extension or the construction of the Expo Line, Phase 1 and 2, along with the extension of the Green Line over in the west side of Los Angeles from LAX into Santa Monica. Moving along quickly, there are sets of improvements that are fall into the category of transportation system management. Best example there would be the completion of our nationally acclaimed ADSAC Center along with transportation demand management, which essentially is trying to get people out of the single occupancy automobile into either carpooling, transit facilities, as well as pedestrian and bicycles. We have another category and last category called goods movement. There are regional improvements here. The most noteworthy is 710 improvements along our southeastern part of the city, along with operations at the ports. I wanted to close by just highlighting that LAWA and the Port of Los Angeles have also included about 19 improvement projects total that speak to the improvements associated with the successful operation of their facilities. It includes improvements along or near freeways, intermodal container transfer facilities for the port would be another example. Let me conclude the presentation, trying to again be succinct, brief, hopefully informative. And if you have any questions, we'd be very pleased to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. President and members, I hope you take time to look at this report and read it. They get off on a long time. Issues take a long time when they start a project, takes many years, and I hope we could focus on it because traffic is the number one issue facing all people in Southern California after our public safety, the issues related to public safety. But traffic, I want to thank Mr. Tanda, Mr. Paul, Mr. Okazaki for your work on that and as an MTA Board Member. And I hope you assign someone in your staff to really focus and push on this. We have, as we mentioned, the construction of the East Side Rail underway right now. That is taking place. We're hoping to line up the Expo Extension of the line through exposition west, which is so important, and also the Orange Line out to the San Fernando Valley, the Busway, which is being done. And as you all know, which I thank you for is your work that we did collectively in getting the discussion of the subway back online. All these are very big, large projects. Mr. Tanda mentioned the Alameda Corridor North, which is the first time I've ever heard San Fernando Road expressed that way. But we have the Alameda Corridor East, which is certainly important for the central Los Angeles and east Los Angeles and the San Gabriel Valley, and now the north, especially in light of the ever-increasing commuter rail and the grade separation necessary. So, members, I hope you all focus on this at some time and also call on me as an MTA Board Member if I can assist in any way because I think traffic is the number one issue that upsets people in cutting through neighborhoods and the overcapacity. Thank you, Mr. Tanda, Mr. Okazaki, Mr. Paul.
We do have other speakers, Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Tanda, this reminds me of a little child who has a Christmas wish list and wants all these presents for the holiday. When I look at the expense, millions and millions and millions of dollars. When we look at reality, how many of these with Caltrans involved in the freeway system, how many of these can we actually anticipate in the near future coming to fruition? I know we have wish lists and then the state doesn't have the funding and the transit funds get dispersed in other areas. But realistically, and I'm saying they're all good projects, but realistically, how many of these can we look at to say are realistic, to have some type of movement forward? I know that Santa Monica Boulevard, Big Santa Monica, Little Santa Monica has taken years and they're moving forward with that. But with this extensive list and I don't know how many billions of dollars if you add up the total, how many can we really anticipate on the city corridors? Because the freeway system is Caltrans. On the city corridors, what can we look at in the relatively near future to have some implementation or some movement forward other than more studies?
Yeah, as you could expect, that's a very difficult question to answer. Under the existing paradigm and the existing set of resources, federal, state, and local, it would be reflected in the short-range plan to be developed by MTA along with our call. I can't really say how many. I do know this, that without additional resources, we cannot do many of the most critical projects without a doubt, and I think we have to look at a different paradigm on how to fund them. User fees would be an example, or those who are creating the additional congestion would have to be looked at too. Those choosing to live in other areas, building in other areas, taxing our system. We'll be very happy to come back with the short-range plan, which is, I believe, updated annually. It's over a five-year period to identify what really could be done.
Some of these work talks about parking restrictions on some of our corridors to have free flow of traffic. Those I think we could do relatively shorter. What I'd like to see is something that we could tell our constituents that we will get within 12 months, we'll get within 24 months. But realistically, some of these, they're probably not going to be done in our lifetime. And as the traffic volume continues to build, and I travel from Ventura Freeway every day, and I'm noticing now that the traffic going northbound into Ventura County is heavier than the traffic going into Los Angeles. The gridlock is greater going into Calabasas or Ventura County, which is all obviously Caltrans and other municipalities have to deal with it. But our local corridors, our Ventura Boulevards, our Victory Boulevards, our Wilshire Boulevards, and I think our consumers and our travelers say, what can we do locally? Yes, we'd like Caltrans to widen the 101 in areas where there's bottleneck. We'd like to have additional off-ramp widening, which is a long process in coming. But I think what we really need to do is show in the near future, if we can have a shortlist, to say realistically, this is what we can do. And I don't know if our gas tax is still getting diverted to other projects, but I know that people are saying, you know, we're paying, where's the money going to do the improvements? Mr. Labange, I'm talking to Mr. Tanda. And I know that you're an expert in that arena, so I'd just like to find out so we could tell them when we find some short-term relief versus the long-term wishes, which we all wish could happen overnight, but we know they're not going to happen.
Okay.
The short term?
The short, you know, the city is in fact doing a lot of things. They do go unnoticed. We have the most advanced traffic system in the United States. It's saving tens of millions of hours of delay that would otherwise be occurring. We have the most advanced system to assist our transit provider, MTA, to get buses through quicker on the Metro Rapid Transit, which has similar types of results. We are doing a lot of things. I'm anticipating too that in the budget that will be coming forward, there'll be hopefully funds to provide even more sets of improvements. We are doing things with our dash and our commuter express. The larger capital improvements though, we don't have funding. And actually also on the larger capital improvements, the problem that we continue to run into is gaining community support to move projects forward that have an overall wide benefit but do have a negative impact localized. We've run into many examples of those just during the past year. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Good morning. I just wanted to ask on two issues. One, we rarely, I don't want to say we're appreciative of the rapid bus down Crenshaw, but what is the long-term or mid-range plan for addressing Crenshaw and, which is generally considered one of the most transit-dependent areas? And then secondly, the only time we hear about the, maybe the use of the dedicated track on aviation near Slosson that goes all the way to the harbor is in conjunction with an alternative to the airport plan, but we don't hear that dedicated track is being considered as part of the transportation system. I'd just like you to comment on those two areas.
I'm going to ask Mr. Okazaki to comment on those because we are currently working with MTA on improvements on Long Crenshaw. So, James?
Thank you, Councilman Parks. MTA has budgeted a $10 million improvement for Crenshaw Boulevard from the Santa Monica Freeway southerly to about 105 to look at exclusive lanes. And so we're working in a study right now to see what we could do to create a bus-only lane in segments where we could remove parking and or possibly widen some streets by modifying frontage roads. Obviously, we need to make sure that if we recommend a, an exclusive lane or take a lane away from an existing peak period or parking lane, that we have MTA mitigate that impact to the community so that we don't lose and create additional congestion. The second question regarding a rail connection from downtown toward LAX using the existing right-of-way, MTA still is looking at that as an alternative. I want to point out that in our comments to the MTA, we did not add, I should say, MTA and Caltrans already has a whole laundry list of projects, so we did not give redundant projects. We only added stuff that, that, that were, many opinion, in our opinion, were new projects for them to consider. The list that MTA will eventually develop will be the melting or melding of LADOT's input, input from other jurisdictions, the ADA Cities plus Caltrans and MTA's own staff. So the long-range plan that comes out in 2005, I'm sure will address and include that alignment that you're talking about for rail.
Okay, I'd like you to keep us abreast because I don't believe that line is being used much since the Alameda Corridor has come online.
The freight, freight line, freight use is next to nil. That is correct.
And then the other one is that we've gone out and talked to many of the people in the community about Crenshaw Boulevard, and because of the configuration of the street and some of the offset lanes and the narrowness of the street, it at least appears very, very difficult to come up with, you'd delete at least, what, two lanes because of north and southbound traffic? You'd either eliminate the parking for businesses or the cul-de-sac area there. And so it's going to be very difficult for a dedicated lane because the, the street is already tied up with just the, what, two, two lanes, north and south now?
Absolutely correct. We, obviously, MTA and DOT will have an outreach with the community and of course with your office, and the, the community will be involved in helping us come up with a solution. Most likely, the buses and the cars are going to have to share if parking is going to be kept there because I believe the businesses in the Limer Park area are totally dependent on that on-street parking. So we will be very cautious about making sure that MTA addresses that specifically. So we're not going to just take a lane away. And obviously, it's a city street, so you will have a lot to say about giving it up.
Now, we're looking for on Crenshaw, the same route that the rapid bus is now on?
That is correct. We're looking at improving the performance of the rapid bus to make it more like the Orange Line, where they have an exclusive lane or a peak period exclusive lane at least, in segments that we could afford to give to the buses. We're not going to give up streets that's going to screw up the businesses or create additional congestion.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I mean, these are great list of long-range projects that certainly, if completed, many of them, I think, would have a tremendous positive impact on the gridlock and congestion which we face. Of course, I'm interested in the projects in and around the Port of Los Angeles. Certainly, with the projected growth of the port tripling in 15 years, I think that is an area that is absolutely, almost at a crisis point. And if we are concerned about probably one of the biggest economic engines between the port and the airport, and we're worried about business going elsewhere or ships going elsewhere, I think we can point to congestion as the number one reason that shipping lines would go elsewhere than come into Los Angeles and Long Beach. So those are so critical in terms of a, not only a regional impact, but, you know, nationwide. If these goods can't be moved in and out of the Port of Los Angeles efficiently, then I really think we're heading for the perfect storm in terms of what's happening. That infrastructure is at capacity. 710, Harbor Freeway, our bridges, it is at capacity now. So the tripling of that growth, I don't know how we're going to handle it. So I, these projects are good. And I also think these projects are important, not only to ease congestion, but many of them would certainly have environmental benefits because congestion is also a number one reason for pollution. When you have idling cars and trucks, ships and trains, that kind of pollution in and around our, our region is huge. Which leads me to ask you the question, you know, the governor has been holding statewide goods movement hearings. I had testified at one of them. I think there's another one this week. I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the draft report that's come out from them and whether or not we are weighing in with his Secretary of Transportation, Sonny McPeak, on some of the projects that we have on the table as well. I think that would be useful information for the governor's task force.
Absolutely. If I may comment, that there is a meeting, in fact, tomorrow at the Caltrans Building. If you didn't know, the mayor's office had waged in on it and they had invited us as well. We've talked to SCAG, Caltrans, and we are at the table now, so.
Good. I think that's important because I think finally, you know, the governor's going to make goods movement a priority, but many of us who represent areas of the city which are impacted negatively because of goods movement are very interested in bringing projects to the table that ease congestion and have environmental benefits for those who live in and around these huge economic engines, whether it be the airport or the port. So I would love to have a coordinated effort with the state on this.
We will.
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to thank actually Mr. Zine for asking a question about what about the local stuff in short-range. Members, we have to continue, and I think Mr. Tanda is right, there are a lot of things we are doing, whether it's dash lines, other alternatives, things as simple as restriping, things that have been poo-pooed, like the left-turn pockets or additional signals. I was at a signal turn-on recently where people had been desperate for one in a part of my district at Inglewood and Allen, where there was an area of a large family development. Kids had to cross the street, accidents had occurred. It was literally taking your life in hand, whether you're a child or an adult. And, and the implementation of that signal has just done so much in that area to calm the traffic and help make it safer. So those local projects are things we can't give up, and we are doing a lot. I met with DOT or my staff just recently on a restriping, on an access to Sunset Boulevard, excuse me, from Sunset Boulevard to the freeway in the west side, you know, in the area and the border between Mr. Weiss's district and mine. Just by doing that alone, restriping and getting Caltrans agreement on restriping of that boulevard as it accesses the freeway is going to have a measurable improvement. Ms. White, Ms. Gruehl, I noticed today, is bringing in a motion on looking at, again, coming up with some adjustment hours in terms of major construction on our streets at rush hours and other times. All of those are things we've got to do and we can't poo-poo them. Even if it's a small incremental assist, small incremental assists add up so that when we get the funding to do a big project, we are helping to improve the whole picture. So I thank the Department of Transportation. The one question I would have is how much has this long-range plan been coordinated with our city planning department? We can't have planners planning and DOT transportation planners trying to solve the problem. It's got to be integrated. So I would like to hear the kind of coordination and implementation. Has this been done in consultation with the planning department? Because looking at where they think growth may occur, not only where we have existing problems today, where traffic growth has occurred, but are they factored in in a significant way into the kind of study and long-range planning that we would put forward to MTA?
Yeah, I'd like to answer that. We do it in several ways. On a daily basis, I believe that the working relationship between city planning and LADOT is excellent, nothing less than excellent. On a management level, we do meet on a regular basis. That's Con Howe and his staff and myself and my staff to go over all kinds of issues that relate to how we can best coordinate the improvements and the priorities on improvements with the land use decisions being made. So I, I think we just do it on a daily basis rather than one time a year coming together on it. There's always room for improvement and we'll continue to try to do that, but I think it's fallen to the A category.
Thank you. And members, I wanted to ask that question because yesterday we had a significant discussion here about the planning department. And there's no question that both the planning department today and the planning department and whomer- today and the planning department and whomever might be looked at as a new general manager in that department is going to have to understand that planning isn't an abstract land use issue. In this city, planning is or equals traffic and/or equals alternatives as mass transit or equals something to incentivize to help make the whole issue of traffic travels better. So it's critical that both our Department of Transportation general manager, as well as our general manager of planning, are as integrated as we see you now in the building across the street with Caltrans and our city Department of Transportation, because it is one big regional picture that we have to solve with all of the tools that we can bring to bear. So thank you for the effort on this, as Mr. Zine called it, the Christmas wish list. But as I said, on the other hand, we are doing a lot, and I thank you for a lot that you are doing on the small day-to-day ongoing problems and ongoing solution to problems that DOT can come up with, have come up with, and have been responsive to in meeting with our constituents. So thank you for that.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President and Ms. Sikowski. There were a couple of issues that I just wanted to highlight, and I think just to follow directly, which was on the planning issue, because we hear so frequently in our communities, and Allen was there the other night in my Sherman Oaks area, which is the impact of development on traffic. And so that coordination, that pre-planning to determine the impact of traffic, to determine if there are land use decisions we can make that will limit the amount of traffic. And I think that, as Ms. Sikowski mentioned, there is a lot of small things that we can do that actually have a large impact, like what we're proposing today in looking at no construction during those peak hours and a formal policy, not only by our Department of Public Works and Street Services, but looking at other utilities, looking at the Department of Water and Power, looking at a variety of other entities that could be getting permits. City planning gives permits every day for people to start construction, which may require a street to be closed. And so I think that we're looking at creative ways. I know the, and we've spoken about it several times, about the importance of ensuring we protect our neighborhoods and how we can do that, and the planning with MTA. We should have that seamless kind of participation with MTA as we do as well with planning and other city departments, because it's really, I think, a critical issue. We have to address, and I don't know how, and this is probably a much bigger issue, is the concern that we have from our public that is if you build it, they will come. And I always say to them, you're partially right, but the other part is, if we don't build it here in the city of Los Angeles, they will be moving to our surrounding cities and on our freeways and on our streets, paying no taxes to the city of Los Angeles to help build our infrastructure, paying no, you know, types of things where they can change their behavior in the city of Los Angeles. So I think that, I'm glad and thank you, Mr. Labonte, for your leadership on this, and I know many of the items in the MTA plan relate to the efforts you had on all those public hearings, and we, my staff participated with yours as well. But I think traffic has become the issue in the city of Los Angeles these days. We all know this week, it's been great, we're on Easter break, I can get in from the San Fernando Valley in 20 minutes during rush hour. So I think we have to think, small end, we have to think big, because if we could just reduce traffic by 3%, it would change our daily lives and our quality of life. So some of the ideas are common sense, some of them are a little more complicated, but I'm glad that we are taking the time to comment to the MTA and that it won't be just once a year that we do this, but the ongoing discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. And one of our appointees to the MTA Board, Mr. Labonte.
Yeah, just to wrap up, I want to thank all the folks with the Department of Transportation. Members, your comments are real important. I think when we talk about the Port of Los Angeles, it does affect the whole region, all of Southern California. Councilmember Parks, when you talk about that Slauson Line or the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, there is a plan for that. But also, and this is why there's discussion, I envisioned flipping the Green Line, I mean, this is long-range, the light rail to Slauson, and converting the Green Line to high-speed rail. This is my, you know, thought as I look at all these things. James doesn't like it, but I could see that you could go in a vision that way out west, excuse me, out east through Orange County Riverside, up through San Bernardino. But this is the importance of these issues as we bring them forward. Maglev, I know Greg Smith is working on that and leading the effort in that with SCAG, which is so important. And Councilmember Zine, when you spoke earlier on the issues related to funding and projects, yes, the governor, this governor and the past governor have failed to implement Proposition 42, which the people of law of this state voted on, voted overwhelmingly. And it is unfortunate that the gas tax, because just right now, we're talking about very big, medium, and major projects, major projects like subways and corridors, transportation corridors, but that gas tax component is hurting not just Los Angeles City, Los Angeles County, but all counties and cities in the state. We need that revenue to be able to meet the needs of the transit public, and as Wendy said, and I've said along, I do those instant polls all the time, transportation, traffic, public transit is so important. So this is a start, members. And, Mr. President, what I would like at some time in the future, that we have you back again, and maybe schedule a few more things and ask that Roger Stovall or John Cato come from the MTA, and that we get more discussion on this issue so we could bring it about in the sense of trying to make change and understanding. It takes a long time to do some things, engineering-wise, but the first step, is that what the words is, the first step is the completion of the longest journey? Is that the right word, Wayne? I may have had that quote wrong, but we're going to drive the issue of transportation safety, three years, you know, three Es, engineering, education and enforcement. But thank you all very much for doing this today and this report. I ask that you make a copy of the PowerPoint to all council members so you could see the good graphics that were done and could help you all. It's very important. I thank you. Safe driving. Take public transit.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Other members of the council wishing to speak at this time, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that's approved. And before proceeding to the next item, I understand Mr. Veragoso's questions have been answered on items 22 and 23. Is that correct?
Yes, they have, Mr. President.
Okay, let's open the roll on those two items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. And Mr. Smith, I believe, can resolve items 15 and 18 rather quickly. Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to take these up, because I do have to leave shortly. On item number 15, we brought to you a great opportunity to fund some things in your districts, and I think all the council members will be very interested in this. Working last year on a pothole crew for a day, I asked the question, how much does it cost to get you out there if I wanted to do some stuff in my district? And they told me the price was like $800. I said, why don't we offer these services on an overtime basis to city council offices, but also to our neighborhood councils, which we fund to the $204 million, and are looking for services to provide to the communities? And so what you have before you today is a real menu of opportunities that you can take back to your neighborhood councils, and for as little as $400 to $800, they can get a pothole crew, a repair crew to do major repairs on streets, a crew that can work on trees, they can fund numerous opportunities at city parks, and there's a list attached. And so what you see before you is an opportunity for each of you to go back to your neighborhood councils with opportunities that they can use their $50,000 allocation to support public services in your communities. And I am going to send each of my neighborhood councils a list of these funding opportunities. I hope you do. I hope you take this as a great opportunity to work with your community councils in getting services to your district on an overtime basis with that $50,000 allocation that we give them each year. So I ask for your approval. There's no cost to the city, this is a real value to the city, because we're going to get some of that money back from the neighborhood councils in providing services that you want done in your communities on an overtime basis on Saturdays by hiring city crews for very little money. There's also a list of park programs available that they can fund. There's also a list of opportunities at the LA City Library Department. So there's a lot of opportunities for neighborhood councils to really use their money in their community to really positively affect the community, and I ask for your support. It's a very good program. I thank Ms. Hahn for getting through her committee, and I think it's good for each of you to go back to your councils with this opportunity for them.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Grul.
I just wanted to say, Greg, great idea. It's fabulous. Our neighborhood councils want to be helpful, want to understand, it helps us understand how much each service costs if we wanted to go out and help identify funds for special areas. So I just wanted to say, great job. This is really going to be something that I think is going to help educate our neighborhood councils about the costs and prioritization, and I think any step we can do is going to make them a better partner. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Mr. Smith.
Got to mention is also, this is good for chambers of commerce, or bids, or any other legitimate organization that wants to put in some money to do projects in the community. So this is not restricted to neighborhood councils, it's a very broad opportunity. Thank you.
There's no further speakers at this time. They are before us concurrently, items 15 and 18. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. And again, colleagues, all items approved today are going forthwith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number six was called special by Councilmember Labonte, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Mr. Labonte.
Thank you. I'd ask David Schulman, our city attorney, to handle this. Here's a copy of the draft ordinance 6A, distributed before all members, amending item six to approve the city attorney's draft ordinance of a 1964 amendment with the county of Los Angeles dating back to when we gave up our health department and merged with the county. Steve Simon from the AIDS Coordinator's Office is here as well.
Honorable members, David Schulman, I had the city attorney's nationally respected AIDS discrimination unit. The procedural posture of this is somewhat interesting. We had to go back to Piper Tech and take a look at the archives in order to discover that the city entered into the public health agreement with the county 41 years ago, because at that time, city taxpayers were being taxed twice, once to support the city's health department and once to support a county health department that was delivering those services to the city. Under the agreement entered into 41 years ago, whenever the city, whenever the county enacts a new health ordinance, before the county has the authority to enforce that ordinance within the city, the city must adopt the ordinance as well. That is what is before you today. And I'll, in a moment, ask the head of the AIDS Coordinator's Office to speak about the substance of the ordinance. Procedurally, however, in reviewing the 1964 contract, our office was concerned about the city's liability exposure. That contract provides that the city is to reimburse the county for certain litigation expenses accrued in enforcing the county ordinance. We negotiated this, we began discussions with the county on this matter, and with your direction, we've received indications from the county that they are willing to enter into an amendment to the 1964 agreement eliminating the city's liability exposure on this matter with respect to the new ordinance before you. So you have before you today the city attorney report summarizing the points that I've just made, you have a draft ordinance, you have as well a motion to amend the draft ordinance, and finally, you have, in our report, the draft of the amendment to the 1964 contract that the county graciously agreed to enter into with us should you so direct. And with that, I'll hand the matter over to Mr. Simon.
Good morning, council members. Stephen Simon, city AIDS coordinator. As David pointed out, most of this item is essentially procedural. From a substantive point of view, I just want to add that the AIDS Coordinator's Office has worked with the county Department of Health, we've worked with the owners of these venues, we've worked with the community and prevention providers to try and come up with a scheme here that would most effectively support AIDS prevention within these businesses. Again, the county will be enforcing their regulations within these businesses, we will continue to work with all the interested parties to try and make sure the enforcement is effective and successful as an AIDS prevention mechanism. Thank you.
Mr. Labonte, anything further?
Thank you very much, your city attorney, our AIDS coordinator. I appreciate it, we ask this to go forthwith.
Great. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items 10 and 11, and those are both called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, items 10 and 11, items pertaining to neighborhood councils.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Jan Perry for bringing this forward. This is a code of civility that, after much scrutiny and changing and tweaking, we believe the Education Committee recommended that all neighborhood councils adopt a code of civility so that it is just something that each member of a neighborhood council could consciously remember, that they should conduct business in a civil, respectful, polite manner. It's not enforceable, there is no teeth to this, there's no punishment or consequences if they are not civil, but it's much like the idea of reading a statement before every neighborhood council in terms of conflict of interest, or what they should remember as they conduct their business. The first time it came to our committee, there were some parts of it that we weren't comfortable with and that we thought should be changed, and we did. But it's just a very straightforward, simple code of civility that, again, it's not enforceable, but many people have been turned off by some of the goings-on of neighborhood councils. We've had reports of people who've given up, who've thrown in the towel, who've said, you know, at the end of the day, we're just trying to make our neighborhood better, we're just trying to improve our community, and they've been insulted and screamed at and bad language has been used. So this actually came from some neighborhood councils that thought this was a good idea, and I wholeheartedly support this. We've got a community impact statement from the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council that approves of this, but thinks that we ought to take it a little bit further, and so I'm going to add this as a friendly amendment, that this code of civility also apply to all city boards, councils and commissions. They felt that was not going far enough to just impose it on neighborhood councils, that all of these bodies probably could benefit from reminding themselves that we're all in public service and that we have an obligation to conduct ourselves in a civil manner. So I'd like to introduce that as a friendly amendment that would apply to us. I'm not going to agree to this until after the mayoral election's over, but I think this is a good idea, and this might go a long way towards making our neighborhood councils run more smoothly and be more healthy. So I hope you all will support this.
That's almost as good as applying it retroactively.
Yeah, I'd be the first one to pay the attention.
Before calling on the next speaker, let me call forward Louis King. We do have one card submitted under public comment for this item. This is item number 10, and colleagues, again, we can consider items 10 and 11 concurrently, so allow the speaker to address this on both, and council members to speak on both. Mr. King.
Mr. President, members of the Los Angeles City Council, I'm honored to have this opportunity to briefly address the council. I am Louis King, professor of psychiatry and human behavior at UCLA and senior scholar of the newly-formed Tom and Ethel Bradley Foundation. Today, I'm here in support of efforts to develop the code of civility for the neighborhood councils and indeed the entire city. I want to make four brief points in support of this idea. First of all, you may very well be aware that within the city of Los Angeles itself, there are 133 different languages being spoken. What holds 133 different groupings of people together? And the issue here is one of civility. In the absence of civility, there's violence. In the absence of civility, there's violence instead of civility. So point number one is that for the city to exist as a common body with some central values and principles, there must be some central set of codes of ethics governed by civility. The second issue has to do with the evidence in support of this. Evidence-based studies considering civil culture, sometimes called social capital, have uncovered compelling findings to indicate that a poor sense of civic duty affects a range of behaviors of responsible citizenship, including some of the following items: lower voter turnout, higher crime rates, higher lawyers per capita, higher default rates on loans, lower number of nonprofits, lower readiness for home ownership, are some examples. Evidence also emerges that, in a city like Los Angeles, the absence of civility produces no leadership, only heads of factions, no leadership of ideas, only a competition of ideologies, no consensus, only an unstable balance of opposing interests. For over a decade, we have witnessed a gradual but sure erosion of the city's common purpose and general common consensus. We reference the report from the Commission of University of Pennsylvania, the failure of leadership, the fragmentation of communities, the culture of intolerance. There must be, not only in the neighborhood councils but throughout the city, an intentional civility. Look at, for example, what's happening in Europe. In order to form the European Communities, they have formed a civility commission, a ten-year commission, simply to address this problem.
Sir, may I?
My final point is that we must have this issue of civility with a method that simply goes beyond simply talking about it. People must be trained for civility. In this regard, Mr. President, I submitted you that it is a task requiring that we draw upon the ideas of Martin Luther King on the beloved community. We must begin to train our citizens for civility. Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Returning to council discussion, let me call upon Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And yes, Ms. Hahn is right that I had originally brought this up out of my deep concern about some of the activity that had taken place in several neighborhood councils in the Ninth Council District, and to be more specific, the Southeast Neighborhood Council, the Vernon Main Neighborhood Council, and the Southeast Central Neighborhood Council. Conversations that focused on having meetings without the benefit of translation equipment, creating an unwelcoming environment to those who were not able to speak in either Spanish or English, making it quite clear that actions were taken without a quorum and not in conformance with the bylaws, again flaunting a very overtly respect, a lack of respect for rules and bylaws, again, creating a discouraging and hostile and negative environment where people are more inclined to walk away, talking about, openly speaking about hatred of elected officials, myself in particular, accusations of individuals, even myself, being a racist. Again, very charged, very toxic environments, entreaties made to developers for money to be given directly to individuals in the neighborhood council, again, creating a negative and toxic environment which discourages investment and development in areas such as the one that I represent. And finally, a lack of respect or regard for the feelings of others and those who are interested in getting at the truth about procedures, procedures for the Los Angeles Unified School District, public notices, procedures that the city uses to grant conditional use permits, and just taking one's own interpretation, putting it on the record, procedures for establishing a homeless shelter in the district, myself in particular, and referring to homeless people as child molesters and sex offenders. These are all negative derogatory comments which only appeal to the small few who perpetuate hatred and negative beliefs and chase good people away who would like to participate and be more civically engaged. And while Ms. Hahn may note that it doesn't have teeth, it is my fervent hope that all of our neighborhood councils fully embrace this code of civility and work towards creating a more positive and optimistic environment. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn, for a second time.
Thank you. That was beautiful. I was going to have Rabbi Freling come to the table, and he was very involved in the creation of this code of civility. And then I would like to say a couple seconds on item eleven, Mr. President.
Very briefly, and I thank you very much for asking me to be here. Yes, in fact, the Human Relations Commission has partnered with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment on this particular issue. We are often called in to help to settle disputes which occur with the neighborhood councils. It is our genuine belief that if, in fact, the code of civility were in place and if people adopted it as part of their responsibility as leaders, to see to it that the neighborhood councils truly were representative and inclusive, then more and more people would be drawn to the work of the neighborhood councils rather than staying away. We can cite for you chapter and verse of a lack of civility, and this code will go a long way to see to it that that ugly chapter comes to an end and neighborhood councils begin to function as they should.
Thank you, and I hope all members will support this. I'm going to briefly, we're putting item eleven with ten. Item eleven, colleagues, is a motion that will allow our neighborhood councils to receive items from LA Shares. And any of you who have gone out to LA Shares with some of your nonprofits in your community know that it's this, it's a great warehouse that has, you know, unlimited number of supplies that neighborhood councils could benefit, whether it's furniture, or Post-it notes, or pencils, or file folders, or whatever. And we believe that neighborhood councils are a perfect fit for LA Shares. We think they should use their $50,000 on projects that really improve their community, improve their neighborhood, and they shouldn't be spending that money on things that they could easily access from LA Shares. So I hope you will also support that motion as well as ten. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange, items ten and eleven.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Ms. Hahn and Ms. Perry, on both issues. I have a little habit sometimes late on Sunday night away from the family of watching the British Parliament. And that's why I sometimes look over at Dennis Seine, and I think of that actor who was that British actor, Austin Powers, I think it is, and that's why I yell your name out, Dennis. So I want to apologize publicly for losing my civility, is that the right word, Ms. Hahn? On a couple of times to you, Dennis. Will you look at me, Dennis, so I could accept it, please? Please, accept it. But also on the issue of LA Shares. LA Shares is one of the greatest programs that Burt Ball, who's one of the greatest citizens of this city, created, and opened its arms to businesses throughout Southern California studios. I remember when IBM moved to Houston out of downtown several years ago, IBM called LA Shares, and the next day their trucks were over and received all the goods that IBM was just going to leave there. And LA Shares distributed to nonprofit agencies throughout. I see Mike Hernandez from his days on the council smiling of good thoughts about LA Shares. So Jan Perry, thank you. Janice Hahn, thank you. But most important, thank Burt Ball, because LA Shares is located in the great Griffith Park area of Los Angeles, and I'm honored to have him in my district, and they're great to have our neighborhood councils take advantage of it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Labange, he's across the street from?
William Mahalan Farm.
And?
Friendship Auditorium. Very good there. You're very good there, Alex.
I'm trying to keep up with you, Mr. Labange. No, we've taken a delegation from my district out there as well, nonprofits and neighborhood councils, so they've already begun to take advantage of a great relationship and resource in Los Angeles. Madam Clerk, can we please open the roll on items ten and eleven? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, this is time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, if you can assist us by placing our public comment clock, and let me call forward first the delegation from the South Central Farmers, Jose Jesus Garcia Hernandez, Maria Rodriguez, Maria Lourdes Coria, Maribel Clatoa, Alberto Clatoa, Gerardo Baquero, Maria Isabel Hernandez, Angelina Milan, Saul Hernandez. They're the first speakers under general public comment.
Buenos dias, señores members of the Consilio. Mi nombre es Jose Jesus Garcia Hernandez.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Jose Jesus Hernandez.
Y estoy hoy aquí para volver a pedir el apoyo de ustedes para seguir ahí en la cuarenta y uno y Alameda.
I'm here for asking your support to continue living or staying in Forty First in Alameda.
Nosotros no pedimos apoyo para iniciar una guerra, ni estamos queriendo cerrar hospitales, que eso es igual a muerte.
We're not asking support for, to start a war or to close down hospitals because that's causing death.
Nosotros estamos ofreciendo una mejor vida para nuestra gente y para esta ciudad.
We're offering a better life for our people and for this city.
A través del trabajo de toda nuestra gente en ese lugar.
In regards with all our work for all the city, for all, with your help.
Y siempre hemos estado aquí pidiendo el apoyo de ustedes. No lo hemos recibido, al menos eso es lo que yo pienso.
And we're all asking here your help, and at least that's what we're asking, and we don't get your help.
Con excepción de algunas cuantas por ahí, como el señor Villarrealgoza, que a pesar de no ser su distrito, cuando lo invitamos, él estuvo con nosotros y mostró como persona que le importan los problemas de la gente pobre que necesita realmente salir adelante en este país.
And with the exception of Mr. Villarrealgoza, who is not in the district, he's been there and he cares about the low-income families that's trying to help out there.
Entonces, yo a lo poco que sé y lo que he visto en estos tiempos recientes que vienen las elecciones, yo creo que esta ciudad, con el apoyo de todos ustedes y personas como el señor Villarrealgoza, es lo que necesitamos porque nuestra gente necesita salir adelante.
I, what I see, I see the elections coming up, and I see that our people need to get ahead. I see it, Mr. Villarrealgoza, that's what we need.
Nosotros, nuestra gente mayor transmite su enseñanza a nuestros hijos, a toda la gente que va ahí, porque queremos que sean gente de provecho, no que anden vagando en las calles. Queremos educación porque eso es el único que va a sacar adelante a nuestra gente, y eso va a resolver todos los problemas. Mientras no tengamos eso y ustedes no nos ayuden, está la cosa perdida.
Our elderly show our younger people the good ways of life, and while our elderly people are showing the younger the good way of life, that's what we need. And if we have your support, we're fine. If not, we're lost without all this.
Por eso mi poco entender, yo digo, necesitamos gente como el señor Antonio Villarrealgoza, que sea líder, líder de la comunidad verdaderamente, porque él se preocupa de los problemas aún cuando no le atañen. ¿Qué quiere decir eso? Que él está con todos y viendo visión futurista para cuando él necesita el apoyo. Ahí está. ¿Por qué? Porque él se lo ha ganado.
That's why I said, we need a person like Mr. Villarrealgoza, because Mr. Villarrealgoza is there, even though it's not in his area. He concerns about the people. Whenever we want him, he's there because that's information, he's there for us.
Por eso mi humilde opinión para el alcalde de Los Ángeles. Eso es todo, y espero que ustedes nos apoyen para continuar ahí ofreciendo lo que humildemente nosotros queremos darle y mejorar con lo poco que podemos toda esta ciudad.
From my opinion, the mayor of Los Angeles, so we ask for your help for everything we can do to help us, please.
Y tenemos una celebración, abril diecisiete, que ya viene, y esperamos que ustedes todos nos acompañen porque por lo menos estamos celebrando que nuestra lucha ha dado un fruto, aunque pequeño, el logro que viene siendo tiempo y que continuamos ahí.
And we have a small celebration, April seventeenth. I wish you, hope you guys can get there. And with our struggle, it's a little bit, but our struggle, hopefully with time, we'll get there.
Eso es todo, gracias, y pues disculpen.
That's all, and thank you, and I'm sorry.
Anyone else from this group would like to speak?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Gerardo Baquero. Disculpe, todos los que están aquí presentes.
Good afternoon, my name is Jorge Baquero. Please forgive all of us that are here present.
Tengo que decir algo a los representantes del Consilio y personas de más alto rango.
But I have to say something to the council and also people higher up.
Soy representante del sur, centro de Los Ángeles, de los campesinos. Nosotros queremos permanecer en ese lugar.
I'm a representative of the South Central Farmers. We want to remain at that place.
Primero es un pequeño pulmón para la ciudad y la otra es que la tierra se cultiva para tener alimentos a nuestras familias.
First, it's a small thing for the city, and second of all, our people, our members cultivate for our family and the city.
Porque los sueldos que tenemos son los más bajos y los artículos de primera necesidad están por las nubes. Gracias.
Because the salary that we make is very low, and the articles, it's up and it's so high, it's costly. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Maria Rodriguez. Vengo a pedirles a los concejales que por favor nos ayuden.
My name is Maria Rodriguez. I come to the council members asking for your help.
Nos ayuden en esto. Si están muy ocupados ahorita, yo lo entiendo, pero les pido un tiempecito.
Asking for your help. I know you guys are very busy, but I ask for a little bit of time.
Un tiempo para nosotros, para que nos ayuden a quedarnos ahí si es posible.
A time for us so that we can remain there if it's possible.
Ahí nos sirve de parque para nuestros hijos, nuestros nietos.
There, it serves as a park for ourselves, for our grandchildren.
Está muy seguro ahí.
It's very safe there.
No hay drogas, no hay nada, todo está muy bien.
There's any drugs, there's anything, everything is fine.
Espero su ayuda.
I wish for your help.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Sí, buenos días. Yo soy la señora María Lourdes Corian.
Yes, my name is Maria Lourdes Corian.
Y estoy aquí para representar nuestros, nuestros lotes que tenemos en cuarenta y uno y Alameda. Yo estoy aquí para pedirles...
I'm here to represent the fields that we have in Forty First in Alameda. I'm here to ask you for...
Que si no los pueden seguir dejando, nos pueden ayudar, apoyándonos con ellos para que salgamos con esos lotes adelante.
If you could let us keep having them, if you could let us keep growing them, if we could continue giving fruits.
Porque en esta tierra todos caminamos en ella, pero también la tierra no necesita solamente bodegas, también necesita plantas.
Because in this soil, everybody walks in this soil.
Y necesita plantas que nos nutran a nosotros también.
Because we don't just need warehouses and places, we also need plants, we need food.
Allí en ese jardín pueden ir ustedes, y les va a gustar mucho porque allí es una, es un jardín donde hay gente honesta, gente trabajadora que quiere trabajar.
There in that garden, there's, you can see a lot of people working, there's honest people, people that want to work.
Que también la gente humilde trabaja. También la gente humilde sabe trabajar.
Even the humble, the meek work, they know how to work, they know how to work the soil.
Y le doy gracias a los concejales por ayudarnos, por estar ahí en esos lotes.
And I tell you, thank you, the council members that are letting us work those soils.
Yo pido que nos dejen, por favor, los lotes, porque ahí, yo tengo cuatro niños, y yo prefiero ver mis niños plantando plantas que nos nutran y no rayando paredes para que la ciudad tenga que estar gastando para, para pagar. Quién desborre las pintadas de los jóvenes que andan en las calles, porque ahí los niños se van a divertir, van a trabajar, y van a aprender cómo...
I have four children, and I rarely see my four children planting plants, sowing seeds. I rarely see them sowing seeds and spray painting graffiti, and you have to pay for the removal of graffiti.
Ahí los niños van a aprender cómo se siembra una semilla, porque hay niños que no saben cómo se siembran las semillas ni cómo crecen las plantas. Y yo puedo traer a mis niños, pueden preguntar a ustedes cómo planta una planta, y mis niños pueden decir, "Se planta, sí, se planta." Porque hay niños que no saben, y por eso les pedimos que nos dejen esos lotes, por favor, porque los niños aprenden mucho de la tierra también, y no queremos solamente bodegas, también queremos plantas que nos nutran. Gracias.
There the people learn, the kids learn how to plant plants, and you could ask any of the children how to plant a plant, and they could tell you and they could show you. No other children knows how to plant a plant, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maribel Clatoa. I'm a current ELEC student, and we're also working closely with USC, USC LA, Cal State Norvich, and Cal State Long Beach. We want to preserve the South Central Farm. I've been... I've been, me and my family and I have been farming the lands for over six years and yet I'm outraged and none of you took and considered us to be a part of such an important decision that was made and yet we were not a part of it. Why, City Councils? We are a part of LA. We are a part of LA. You should include us in such a decision that is, concerns us and jeopardize our every way of living. We are families, we are feeding families. We have a place where kids are safe and we are creating strong bonds between families. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council Members. My name is Alberto Clatua and I'm a current student at East Los Angeles College. For the past 13 years, the South Central Farmers have been providing a good service to our community. Apart from providing fresh fruits and vegetables on a daily basis, the garden has become an oasis for many children which they are able to play and learn without worrying about gangs or other type of violence. And I'm angered that you guys are not taking us into conversation. We are a part of Los Angeles and we demand support. Let me remind you that each and every one of you, when you go out to lunch, when you eat with your families, you are consuming the labor of many farmers and we demand respect and we demand support. We need the support in order to maintain such a natural habitat in an urban city. We need it and we're fighting for it and we're here to say, "Y aquí estamos y no los vamos." South Central Farmers, Feeding Families.
Thank you. There are other cards that I would like to call on this time. Dr. Mafus Michael, Pedro Barrera, Patricia Martinelli Price. Please come forward.
Good morning, everyone. I want to try my English is a little short. I come from a little country and over there we don't have an English school. So I went only for six years in the school. But I come to LA and I started reading English and I understand a little bit. I'm so happy to live in South Central and I'm so happy to work with the community, especially the kids. I'm now president from Polidore Foundation and we try to work with the kids. Our intention is to help, to give it food, to give it clothes, to give it whatever they need, the kids. If they need rooms for studying, whatever they need, they need computers, they need something traditional for our country, we want to provide them. So we started a year ago and now we do a lot of things for the little kids. And now the reason I'm here is because I come to inviting all you guys to the second event we have for Easter Hunt. It's going to be on 115 East Washington Boulevard. It's on the property of the Clinica Medical San Miguel. So I'm so happy to Mrs. Jean Perry support this event. So thank you and we're waiting for you this coming Saturday. Thank you.
Hi, good, well, I think it's afternoon now. I'm not even sure now the time. Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Martinelli Price. I am the executive director of the Polidore Foundation. That was started by my Hispanic grandfather in Las Vegas, Nevada. He works, I mean, he actually worked in Los Angeles also. He had an affiliate here for many, many years. When my uncle took over the foundation, he decided to close the office in Los Angeles and concentrate in Las Vegas, Nevada and Santa Fe, New Mexico. But I'm very proud to say that for the past five years, the foundation has actively worked very close with major nonprofit organizations here in Los Angeles. We have actually been working with señor Pedro Barrera that works very closely with the homeless, inner-city disadvantaged youth here. And we're very proud to say he is the new president of the Los Angeles Polidore Foundation. We are doing an incredible Easter egg hunt for the youth here in this community. This is our second annual, but we do major events. We do advocacy, we are involved with learning centers, a lot of involvement with gangs where we actually go in and do intervention. We have been recognized by five presidents, my grandfather's foundation by five presidents. We just, you know, there's major, major things that have happened, but we're here with Dr. Michael and we decided, I hope all of you can join us. And we're very, very proud to say that Councilwoman Jean Perry has taken Mr. Barrera under her wing to really, really help us. And we want to introduce also one of our major sponsors. We have a lot of sponsors here in Los Angeles, but Dr. Michael from Clinica San Miguel. And we have the stork here with us. We're hoping that this weather will really be better. And I came in with my glitter Easter egg costume from Las Vegas and I welcome all of you to come and visit our incredible city. We're having the 100 years of Las Vegas this year. And of course, I'm very proud being born and raised in Las Vegas, but I also love your incredible city here. But I want to introduce you to Dr. Michael because he's our incredible sponsor. And we brought you some little goodies. A lot of you might not, you know, actually might not be into Easter, but Happy Passover to a lot of you because my mother was Sephardic Jew. But I was raised with my father that is Italian and I also speak Spanish because my mother was Spanish Jewish. But I brought you guys some little goodies and so Happy Easter to a lot of you and to a lot of you that are not, you know, that are Jewish, Happy Passover. And we have our wonderful stork for, we decided we didn't bring a rabbit because we thought we'd bring the stork in for actually, we're saying we're using the stork to deliver an incredible, you know, spring weather rather than the rabbit that is only going to deliver Easter eggs. And this is Dr. Michael. He'll like to say a couple of words. And all of you got a personal invitation. And we want to thank again Councilman Perry and we want all of you to invite some of the inner-city kids of every ethnic background and religious background. We'd like them to come to this incredible event. And here's Dr. Michael. He's like to say a couple of words. And thank all of you for all you do for this incredible city and I welcome you to come and visit us in Las Vegas.
Thanks, Patricia. My name is Dr. Michael. I've been in Los Angeles here for over 25 years. I'm a doctor. I came from Egypt and actually I believe Los Angeles is the best place which fits me here. I've been having clinics all over. I was in Western Adams for a long time and I still have a clinic in Western Adams. Now we have a new clinic in Jean Perry's area in Washington and Maine and I believe that clinic has been in existence for 40 years. I hope I'll do another 40 years for you and I won't let you down. By the way, I do have a lot of experience in emergency rooms here in Los Angeles, some other places. So I really, I know the problem was the health system in Los Angeles when it comes to how much people pay in emergency rooms, who's insured, who's not insured. We're trying to do some kind of an equation where we offer good medical services, not too expensive. I have three or four clinics that are open 24 hours. I know how 24 hours is very important for Los Angeles. I don't want to take your time, but I'm available. If you guys need some good medical services, I have been around everywhere. Martin Luther King, private hospitals, private clinics, Beverly Hills clinics, plastic surgeries, nonprofits, completely free, I'm available. I thank Los Angeles. I thank you for listening to me. And we are inviting you, actually inviting everybody for a health fair for Easter. Especially we did the kid more to the kids of low income in Los Angeles this Saturday between 12 o'clock and 4 o'clock. And I hope Jean Perry is coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lovlo, did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and say for everyone in the viewing audience, this person has been sitting in this costume for three hours in the stork uniform. We ought to give you a round of applause just for your diligence and perseverance. Here for the stork, three hours in the stork uniform.
Thank you. There are two more cards for public speaking. Is Dr., is Mr. Doug Cordoff here and Ted Lang? All right.
And Madam President, also there might be a quorum problem. I don't know if there are 10 council members present.
All right, could we check on that, on the quorum? Because we do have a special agenda which hasn't been able to be called yet. So let's, we are checking on the availability of reviving our quorum. But in the meantime, let me call Mr. Doug Cordoff and Mr. Ted Lang.
I could wait until the quorum is called.
No, why don't you go ahead and continue.
Well, I'm a backer of, thanks, my name is Doug Cordoff. I come from Seal Beach. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak here at the City of Los Angeles. I'm a backer of solar power and I hope that you receive the handouts, that pesky chart that I handed out. What I wanted to do was explain it. That curve in the chart is a typical daytime electric use graph from the Independent System Operator website. And what you can tell by looking at this chart, is there a problem? What you can tell by looking at this chart is that there never is a shortage of electricity, there never was. If you were looking at the Independent System Operator website at the time of the so-called energy crisis, you would have seen various generators over the state being shut down so they could create the crisis. The problem has always been evening out the usage. And the problem is there's a big spike in electric demand in the daytime and it falls to nothing at nighttime. And that means that generators must be shut down and that means that we run into shortages in the daytime. It doesn't matter how long your shortage is, it's like a flood. If it's just an hour, that means you have a blackout. So we have to plan for that maximum period in the daytime and the planning has been good. But what we need to do, in the opinion of many people, is to put in solar power because that provides an automatic peaking unit. In the daytime, solar power powers up. As you can see by that chart, the solar usage lowers that daytime peak. Now, I'm also here to talk about electric cars and we're promoters of electric cars because part of the leveling out process would be to soak up some of that power at nighttime by charging electric cars so they could be risen in the next daytime. I don't know how many people know this, but at Lake Castaic and 17 other locations, we actually pump water up to Lake Castaic at nighttime so that the next day during peak periods it accumulates, that's right.
Can I ask you?
President, I think this man, have you been up to the Water Power Commission? I want to conclude your remarks right now. I want to tell you where to go. I want you to address that commission because you bring up some good ideas. Thank you.
All right, and I would like to ask you to sum up.
I am summing up. I didn't notice the time up there. And I just wanted to finish by saying the next time I'll be talking about the cost of solar power and I'll be asking you to make three, for three things. I'll be asking for you guys to, as a city, to change the DWP policy to help us do that, to create or designate an energy efficiency engineer and to support the use of electric cars such as the American-made EV1 car, the electric car made by General Motors which uses no gas and no electric. And there's no reason why we couldn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker?
Well, what a pleasure to be here. My name is Ted Lang. I'm the founder of the Latuna Canyon Community Association, the Latuna Oak Canyon Community Association and the Writers Guild Literacy Project for inner-city schools. I'm here to address an issue of neighborhood councils. You want respect, so I think we should discuss this. Recently, there was an election of officers for a newly created entity called the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. This newly created organization is an outgrowth of a neighborhood empowerment initiative for which Joe Wax fought. Unfortunately, no one truly cares about the organization and this is best exemplified by the fact that there were extraordinary voting irregularities, irregularities that are of such a egregious nature that it's mind-boggling. First of all, there was no secret ballot. The League of Women Voters, an organization established to ensure that women's votes were correctly tabulated administered the election, tabulating ballots that came back to the committee and received and voted where there were notations and symbols that allowed each vote to be identified by residence, by name, and who they voted for. Secondly, voters were not subjected to any form of qualification. In many instances, ballots were requested and received and voted wherein the applicant was not of age or even qualified to vote. The third thing was that the membership that constitutes this area is less than 1% of the people who actually live here, who actually voted and were involved. In the above violations, the elections arbiter, Scott Barrett, elected not to take action. He admitted culpability and he admitted the violations and that's detailed in his report of the 15th, but he let it go. So in the meantime, folks, you've got countless dollars, perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars, of taxpayer-provided funds that are being needlessly and carelessly expended as this organization, which has no standards, no representative base goes forth. This type of democratic election would not fly in Afghanistan or Iraq, countries to which we're exporting our democratic principles. So in conclusion, I stand before you, the elected representatives of Los Angeles, people who ran and participated in legitimate elections held under legitimate circumstances, asking that you protect us and reconsider the results of this election. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Hahn?
I do want to respond. Number one is, we had a lot of complaints, just like yours, from a lot of neighborhood councils over the city of Los Angeles. And while when Dennis and I were on the Charter Reform Commission, we erred on the side of not codifying a lot of procedures and policies for neighborhood councils, we have now rethought that. And in fact, there is now an election policy guideline which has been adopted, I think, since that election that will answer and prohibit a lot of what you talked about. I will say though, you're more than welcome to challenge this election and we actually have a procedure within the department...
I would like to know about that.
With Department of Neighborhood Council that we have a grievance procedure and an election procedure where we will have neutral parties looking at the complaints and the challenges and making a ruling on how to move forward.
If I may say one thing, what has happened here is you have had a late burst of elective activity where Latuna Canyon, where I live, suddenly burst through. The people who've been working for three years on this from Shadow Hills and Lakeview Terrace, they blew them out. And so basically the council represents our canyon. And this is where most of the problems occurred, where people, you know, suddenly registered that weren't qualified. But the most disturbing thing, if I can say this...
I'm going to ask that you have the discussion, the press, Ms. Hahn on the side.
Right, and I encourage you to challenge the elections and we have a procedure for you to do that.
Okay.
All right. Yes, Ms. Gruel?
This is my district. I know Ted has been sharing some of the emails with me. Marcella is also going to share with you some of the procedures from my office as well. So I appreciate you taking the time and staying here for the last three years. Three years, makes it feel like three years, but last three hours. Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Ted Lang. All right, that does conclude the public hearing and close, so a closed public comment period. Madam Clerk, does that conclude the items that are on the agenda?
Yes, it does. However, there is a special meeting that has also been agendized.
Let us call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labonge, Lovlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarrigosa, Wyssine, Padilla. Eleven members present and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, we are in session on the special session. What is before us?
There is one item on the agenda and it's a communication from the Environmental Affairs Department regarding authorizing grant funding applications.
All right, is there any discussion on that item, one, item one on the special agenda? Seeing none, that matters before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
I love an eyes.
All right, that matters. All right, that matter is approved. We'll send that forth with as well. We will now adjourn our special meeting and go back into our regular meeting.
I'm sorry, on the regular meeting, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
And there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember, Mr. Kowski requests to be excused Tuesday, April nineteenth for city business. That meets council policy.
That excuse is approved.
And Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, March thirtieth, to leave at twelve fifteen for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti's excused.
And that clears the desk.
Any announcements, members? Any announcements? Mr. Labonge?
There's a wonderful program this weekend at the zoo for all, to bring children out. Little program, celebrate Easter, and not the religious holiday, but the nonreligious holiday, bunnies and rabbits and all that. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I do believe in separation of church and state, but not rabbits and Easter. So with that in mind, I encourage anyone to make their way to the zoo. Take a good hike, too, in anywhere in the Santa Monica Mountains or anywhere. It's a beautiful time. The mustard is as high as your hips, and it's a wonderful time to get out and experience hiking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And let me remind our viewing audience that we will not be having a session on Friday. Council is in recess for Friday, so our next council meeting will be next Tuesday. Any other announcements? Are there any adjourning tributes? There are adjourning tributes, so could I ask everyone to please rise? Let me recognize Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It is an honor to actually adjourn in memory of Jack Innis Stone. Unfortunately, I was not made aware that he had passed away in November of last year, nineteen, two thousand and four. He was seventy-eight years old. I was only in talking to his wife, Louise Stone, who is very active in the neighborhood council, who I'd seen several times, but she had just been going forward and being an active member. And when I found out, I said I really wanted to make sure that we adjourned in his memory. Jack Innis Stone was the epitome of an all-American hero. A resident of the Second Council District, Jack was born on October twenty-fourth, nineteen twenty-six, in Pacific Grove, California. He attended Palms Grammar School, Palms Grammar School, University High School in Los Angeles, and graduated from Kansas State University with a BS degree in physical education in nineteen fifty-one. He was in the Navy and served our country in World War II. He was a talented athlete and was an all-American basketball player at Kansas State. His wife, Louise, often remembers him saying, "We should have won that Kentucky game," a nineteen fifty-one NCAA championship that he always recalled. He was first alternate on the nineteen fifty-two U.S. Olympic basketball team that won a gold medal. He coached the men's basketball team at Alamaney High School in the sixties and continued to show his love for the game by winning a gold medal in nineteen seventy and nineteen seventy-seven for playing in the Senior Olympics. Jack had a long career with IBM, and after working for several other top electronic firms, decided to start his own office equipment and supply company, which he ran until he retired. After a long and courageous battle with cancer, Jack Innis Stone passed away on November nineteenth, two thousand and four. I met Jack precinct walking, and he was kind of surprised that not only did I go to his house once, but I went twice, and remarked to his wife that even though I was not of the same party as he was, he was still going to vote for me. And he had a great sense of humor, an easy smile, and a kind nature, and really will be missed by so many of us. He's survived by his wife of twenty-four years, Louise, two daughters, Connie and Carrie, and his grandson, Aaron. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Ms. Hahn?
Thanks, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn our meeting today in memory of just a great guy, one of San Pedro's greatest community leaders, Tom Papadakis, who recently passed away at the age of eighty.
All members.
All members. That's great. Tom was the youngest of eight children, born and raised in San Pedro. He attended San Pedro High School, where he ran track, he played football, and later he served in World War II. He later owned and operated the LaSalle Hotel, which was San Pedro's first one-hundred-plus-room hotel, and it was built by his father in nineteen twenty-three. He was such a great community leader. He was such a great mentor to many, many public servants, myself being one of those. He loved the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club. That was one of his favorite charities, and he even established a foundation that would continue to support that great club. He was a big USC supporter, as everyone knew. And his son, John Papadakis, and his two grandsons have played football at SC. And he was very active in his church community, St. Catherine's in Redondo Beach. His obituary said, and Angie, his wife of fifty-eight years, told me when I called her the morning after he passed, that he loved San Pedro. He loved its location. He loved its population. He loved its culture. He loved it very much, and San Pedro will miss Tom Papadakis greatly. He survived by his wife, Angie, of forty-eight years. There are three sons, Nick, John, and Tom, three wonderful daughters-in-law, and ten grandchildren, and he has two great-grandchildren. He was just such a great guy, and even at the night before he had a heart attack, I was with him as he attended with Angie the gang alternative, the GAPS Annual Dinner, which Angie actually helped found in the Harbor area Gap. And even before that, he insisted on walking every day from his home to his office. He never wanted to succumb to any kind of feeling of illness or disability. So it was really, he went to the very end, working, doing what he loved, and we will really miss Tom. But his legacy as a great human being will go on forever.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Councilmember Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Reverend Joseph Talaferro Campbell, born in Chicago, Illinois on March fifth, nineteen twenty-eight. Received his formal education in Chicago Public School system. At a very early age, he joined the Hertzell United Methodist Church and was a member of the youth choir, and he went on to become the choir director. In his past, he served as a minister of music at three different churches, Progressive Baptist, Greater Metropolitan Baptist, and Tabernacle Baptist. He toured the country with Reverend James Cleveland, the James Cleveland Singers, Cassette George, Mahalia Jackson, and the Clara Ward Singers, also with the Preston family and many other gospel legends. Reverend Campbell attended Chicago Northwestern Universities and a graduate of Garrett Theological Seminary in Evanston, Illinois. He's a former pastor of congregations in both Chicago and Spokane, and is the founder and pastor of the first black Christian church in Simi Valley. He's a published author and founder of the Department of Religious Education in Southern California. His many affiliates include membership in the National Baptist Convention of USA, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, NAACP, SCLC, the Baptist Ministers Conference of Los Angeles in Southern California. He served his country proudly and received honorable discharge from the United States Navy. He will be remembered by all that knew and loved him. He leaves a host of family members. Funeral services will be Monday, March twenty-eighth. May rest in peace.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned. Thank you.